Good evening. Welcome to Tewksbury Board of Select meeting of June 25th. Before we can begin, could we all please rise and do the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. This section of the meeting is for interviews, for the school facility study committee interviews. Our first guest will be Ms. Castiglione. Could you come up and introduce yourself for the record?
Maureen Castiglioni.
Address?
Oh, I'm sorry, 1098 Whipple Road.
Okay, we just have to have the recording. If you can speak close into the mic, too.
Yeah.
So the recording's in, you can hear you. Before we begin, nobody else is here, so it looks like I'm going to make this announcement for every candidate now. We're going to interview tonight, take our notes. We are not going to make a decision tonight because we do have other candidates coming in on a separate date.
Yep.
So I don't want you to sit there and say, oh, am I going to get it tonight?
No.
You'll know within, I don't know when our next interview session is, but we'll have it by the end of July.
I was going to say, I believe it's your next July meeting, because when they sent out the email for the dates, they said, here are the dates you can pick. Tell us what day works for you.
Right. But I just want to mention that, so you don't sit there and say, it's going to be me.
No.
All right. With that being said, I am going to turn it over to the board, and we'll start off with Mr. Reider.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for coming in.
Yep.
And thank you for applying. You know, we, the board, have seen your narrative. I guess, could you just share what you'll bring to the committee of chosen?
Well, I have lived in town for 25 years. I've been active in the schools for the whole time my kids have been in the schools. And I'm no longer in the schools. I didn't take a full-time job. I went and did some, doing something else. But I'm very invested in the town and seeing how the schools run and making sure things are being done in a way that benefits the town and benefits the kids in the town, because it really is, in the end, all about the kids.
Okay. Okay. And did you read the mission statement? Just following up the mission statement, was that, through you, Mr. Chair, was that put out, mission statement, for the...
No, I have a copy of the memo from
Okay.
The school committee that Brenda had put out back, Mrs. Reagan had put out back
Okay.
On March 14th, I believe.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you. That's all for now, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Ms. Wellman.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So, we will be repeating kind of the same questions to all the candidates, and, you know, I have a little commentary, not commentary, but prelude to my questions. It's important to note that this is very important work that the town, that this board is asking our appointees to make. And it's forward-facing, and will take some time and commitment, including mostly night meetings. So this committee will require a quorum in order to operate, and it's important for our appointees to understand that they will be expected to attend all of the meetings and to participate and contribute to the body of the work. Are you prepared to make that commitment?
Yes, I am.
Okay. The select board is delegating members to represent this board in the interests of the whole town while doing this work. As such, we are relying on our appointees to maintain an open minds and listen and learn about our facilities, our school program, our educational program, projections, and our financial position now and into the future, so as to make the best recommendations at the end of this process. Are you prepared to have an open mind and learn before you make these recommendations?
Yes, I am.
Do you understand open meeting law?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Okay, Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you for coming out tonight. Also, I appreciate your narrative and all of the time and energy you've put into our town over the past, what is it, 10 years?
I've lived here 25, but I've been volunteering
Oh, all right.
For probably 20.
All right, 20 it is. Thank you. Most of my questions have been asked about open meeting and available time, so my final question would just be, what is your understanding of what this committee will be doing, and what do you believe you can add to it?
My understanding from the memo is that it's to evaluate the needs of the school system and make decisions about the buildings based on, you know, population, what they need. You know, I believe at town meeting, another candidate had recommended, made a suggestion about consolidating schools rather than trying to build a new school, because it kind of seems like people always come and say, oh, we just need a new school, which is not always the solution. And it's those kind of ideas that maybe people don't think about. You know, I was on the reconfiguration committee 12 or 13 years ago, whenever that was, and there was, that was an eye-opening committee to be on, because there was a lot of information presented that I had never thought about. So it's, I'm sort of expecting the same with this committee, where it's going to be a lot of ideas brought forward that you have to really look at and say, what's in the best interest?
Perfect. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thanks.
Mr. Kratman.
Hi, Ms. Castiglione, thank you for coming in. I know you've spent years and years volunteering in the community, so I didn't need to really go into your resume too much, but this is going to be one of the committees where we're going to have to really dig deep, because we just spent a lot of money on a lot of different aspects of the town, which is great. But that's going to draw people to move to this community.
Yep.
What are your thoughts on how the schools are now? Because you have children in the school committee.
Well, I have one who graduated last year.
Yep.
And I have one who goes to the tech. He does not go to Tewksbury High School. Overall, I have been pleased with the schools. I think we have good staff. I think we have good programming. I think the people in the schools are okay. I think, I spent 10 years at the Heathbrook, as I said, running the library, whatever, and it's just, you know, it's an okay building. I didn't see anything really wrong with it, but, you know, I know there's a lot of things wrong with a lot of the buildings. You know, my kid at the high school, which is, what, 12 years old at this point, there's tiles coming up out of the floor, there's pieces come, whatever, and I sort of look at that and go, what did I vote for, you know, 14 years ago? I voted for a new high school, and already it's falling apart, like 14 years in? That's kind of not good. So I want to maybe be involved and help, see what we can do to not necessarily spend lots of money, but maybe make, you know, make hard decisions and say, what do you have to do?
No, your institutional knowledge is very important, and you've been in the schools, and you've seen what's in there.
Yeah.
I mean, you have a little bit more into it than most. But, you know, the population keeps changing, so if you look at one grade, it seems like we don't, we have, you know, the student numbers are going down. But then if you look at future
Yep.
Populations, it looks like we don't have enough room. So it's a difficult decision of looking at the whole picture and then kind of looking at a plan of what may come five years, 10 years, and what's going on. So do you have any thoughts on that, like what you would be looking for?
No, again, it would be looking at the information. Like when I was on the reconfiguration committee, that was the same idea. It was like, well, here's the population we have right now. Well, now we're talking about shifting schools around, and, well, how is that going to work? And, well, what if we've got these amount of kids now, but the projected number for five years from now is this? So there were a lot of decisions like that to be made. So I'm anticipating the same kind of decisions being made on this committee, where you have all this information presented to you, because again, like you said, it's not just, we have less kids at the high school right now, but then you look at kindergarten and first and second grade, and those populations happen to be much bigger.
Yep.
So it's just keeping an open mind. You have to look at everything.
All right. Appreciate your honesty and your answers to the questions. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kratman. And I want to thank you for your application. We don't have many citizens that want to volunteer much anymore, you know, everybody's too busy. But my colleagues asked, answered, you answered most of the questions that I was going to ask, but I do have one question. In your narrative, it says, you're a parent with a school background, and opening you have on the committee, it says, you're an ideal candidate to fill the parent with a school background. Now, are you going for one of the parents' grades 5 through 12, or are you going for the resident-at-large?
The resident-at-large.
Okay.
Because I don't have children in the school right now, because as I said, my youngest is at Shoshin Tech, so he's not
That's still a school.
But he's not in, it's not Tewksbury. He is not considered, no, he's not considered in district, trust me, have gone down this road. He's not by the Tewksbury school system. We are not, I no longer have children in Tewksbury.
Okay.
Well, and Shoshin Tech is beyond the scope of this state committee.
Right, right. Okay, that's all I have, because you answered most of the questions my colleagues asked. And again, I want to thank you for coming.
Well, I want to thank you guys for having me.
And again, we will get back to you after we complete all the other interviews.
Absolutely.
And there's a lot of them.
And that's okay.
Okay.
But then that makes me actually feel good to know that there's that many people
It actually does make everybody feel good.
Yeah. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Chris Kingston. Good evening, Chris, how are you?
Good evening, how are you folks?
I am well. Could you just state your name and address for the record, so our recording secretary has it?
Christopher Kingston, 221 Cabot Road, Tewksbury, Massachusetts.
Okay, well, we'll start off, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for your application, too. We appreciate it. And this time, we'll start off with Mr. Kratman.
I think you heard some of the questions from the last, previous thing, and
I did.
You know, pretty much going to answer, ask a lot of the same questions. You know, you're, you know, why do you want to be on the committee first?
I've had two children. One has graduated from Tewksbury High School and Tewksbury Schools. My other son's a rising senior. I coached basketball and baseball and took my kids to various educational events and whatnot, and have been in all the schools for basketball and events and whatnot. And as my younger son is about to matriculate out at the end of next year, I have some free time on my hands. And I have, I'm currently a teacher in the Revere Public Schools. I've been an educator for 27 years. I've been the union vice president. I've been the union, I'm currently a negotiator for the Revere Teachers Association. I'm also a former president of the association. My father was a former school principal, and a number of my family members are also educators. So I understand the value of kids first, and what's in the best, what's in the best interest and needs of students ultimately is what's in the best needs of the district or the community. And I think the Tewksbury Public Schools have done both of my children a strong service in their advantage moving forward. My son, my older son just graduated from Fairfield, and he's heading into law school. I think this district and this community gave him a strong preparation for those hurdles that he's already jumped over and he's about to. So I, my opportunity to give back with a knowledge of what districts need in terms of educational setting and use of funds and use of resources is of vital importance. When I was, when I was a kid, growing up in Revere, they closed a number of schools, and in hindsight, it was the worst thing that they did. They rearranged, they realigned for population, much like Tewksbury is facing now, but within a few short years, that shortsightedness hurt them, because it led to overcrowding, and then it led to, when I started teaching, they had to build, they literally have built five buildings. I was on initial committees for that when I was an educator, so I watched them do that. I'm currently at a high school where they're finalizing plans to build a $500 million high school, which I'm on a number of committees for that. So I do understand the fiscal responsibilities of what we're going to do, or what would need to be done with resources and facilities.
Well, Revere and Tewksbury are two different worlds.
They are, they are, but kids aren't.
Yeah.
You know, what the needs kids have, and as a parent, I want to know that my own children or my own child that's left is in an environment that's designated for success longitudinally, not just for the time being, and I think that's a huge aspect of it. And you're right, we are two different districts, but kids are kids.
I was born in Revere and grew up there, so I know a lot about, and they've built, they're building two high schools in the time that we built one.
Correct.
It's, I find it amazing that they're spending that kind of money again.
Yep.
But the resources, that's great.
That falls back to the needs of the kids and sometimes the shortsightedness of what communities can do or not do.
Well, you have a perspective from being in the schools, so, and you've coached and you've been part of this with your children. What do you think of the conditions of the schools in Tewksbury right now?
Obviously, building new schools and having a relative, I'm sorry, I consider the high school a new school, because it's not 40 or 50 years old. And I also look at the use. You know, the, the number of communities that would kill to have the ability to utilize their public schools to the extent that our kids have used their, the public schools is phenomenal. You know, not having, not asking youth groups, whether these sports or other organizations, to pay ridiculous fees to use facilities. And when they use facilities, there is going to be some wear and tear, but I think if you did a cost projection of what the wear and tear might be in terms of the benefit of what these programs and clubs can do, it far outweighs whatever remedial work might have to be done in the schools. And Tewksbury has done, the custodial staff and the school administration itself has done a wonderful job keeping buildings manageable even though they were as old as they were. And the idea that when you have older buildings and you listen to parents in town talk about bringing their kids, you talk to parents at parent-teacher nights, and they talk to the, they're talking to us about, I remember when I went here, and that's a wonderful thing. That's what keeps community, and not all districts have that. So I think that the buildings themselves, I think it's like a comfortable chair, you know, that you have in your living room. I mean, yes, you are going to use it, it's going to take some, some grief, but I think the district has done a good job of keeping it, keeping it to a point where everything is usable.
Thank you. I agree with you, and thank you for your honesty. I appreciate it. I'm done, Mr. Chair.
Maggie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Kingston, thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will keep it brief to ensure that my colleagues have some time to ask questions. I guess my first question is going to be around open meeting law. You sound like you have a lot of experience, since the number of committees you've mentioned that you've been on. So is it a safe assumption that you're familiar with open meeting law?
Yes.
Okay, great answer. And then the other question I have for you is, what is your understanding of what this committee is going to be doing in a succinct, as you can, explanation?
As succinctly as possible. I would have to say it's, there is a numbers problem for the sheer size of the districts and the, the amount of space that you folks have, that we have as a community, and we need to figure out what's best ways to use it, so it's economical and feasible and efficient for the community and for the kids.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Wellman.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Kingston, for your application
Thank you.
And for being here with us tonight. What subject do you teach?
I teach American government politics, financial literacy, and sports and culture. I think that's the new one they're going to throw at me this, in the coming fall.
This next year? Yeah?
Yeah.
That sounds good.
I teach also juniors and seniors, so.
Thank you. Thank you for your service to the people of Revere
Thank you.
And to Tewksbury. So my colleague asked if you are familiar with open meeting law, which I appreciate that answer. I think you probably heard me say to Mrs. Castiglione that this work is important work that's being delegated to our appointees. It will be mostly at night meetings. The expectation is that every appointee will attend every meeting and will be fully participating in the body of the work. Is that something, is that a commitment that you're prepared to make?
Yes.
Thank you. This is also forward-facing work. You will need to be representing this board and the interests of the whole town as you go forward in this work. As such, we are relying on our appointees to maintain open minds, to listen and learn throughout the process about our facilities, our educational programming, our projections, and our financial position now and into the future. Are you prepared to make that commitment to being open-minded throughout the process?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. I have no further questions.
Thank you.
Thank you for your application.
Thank you.
Mr. Reider.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Kingston.
Hello, Mr. Reider.
As I'm aware, you'll be having some free time. You know, full transparency, Mr. Kingston and I have known each other for years. Our children are great friends. So thank you for putting your, your name out there and willing to commit your time. Again, being one of the last to speak, you've kind of touched on it. I was just looking for, you know, again, you've been union leader for 27 years, a family of educators, not only in the teacher, but as you stated, as your father's a principal. So you know the importance of education and also the importance of giving the kids and students a good environment. And I think that is what we're looking for in this next committee, finding a comfortable medium there.
Mm-hmm.
You know, making sure that they have the right facilities and making sure that our teachers are providing, providing the best services. So again, thank you, and I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Again, while I'm last, so
No, it's, it's all easy.
But I do have one question for you. Again, thank you for coming, and as I explained to Ms. Castiglione before, we are not going to make a decision tonight, because we have a number of candidates to interview.
Absolutely.
So I just want you to understand that. I'm down to one question. Can you separate your views as being a teacher and the needs of an educator with the purpose of this committee?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
That, that is kind of important to me, because as a teacher, you could turn, well, we need this, but the building needs this, you know? And I just want to clarify that you
I'm a, I'm a very practical person.
Okay.
And I oftentimes draw the, the ire of the MTA and other groups, because I tend to look at things in a much more matter-of-fact, practical way of what's best, not what's best for kids, not what's best for a teacher or a union member or this person or that person. When you boil it all down, what's the most important thing for the children? And oftentimes, as elected officials or people that are asked to work with children, we're the caretakers of their needs. So if we are the caretakers of their needs, we're making decisions that's best for them and for the caretakers in general, not just, you know, splitting hairs.
Right back at you. We're the caretaker of the taxpayers, so
Absolutely.
You know, it's kind of
And that, and I'll be honest with you, as a union person through and through, you know, I, I have arguments all the time with my colleagues, because I am a taxpayer, and I don't want to pay any more money, because it takes away from my kids.
That's right. Well, all right, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
We appreciate your time.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you, folks.
Okay, next we have Jerry Gustus. Mr. Gustus, how are you?
Good morning, sir.
If you can come up to the podium there, state your name and address for our recording secretary.
Christian name's Gerald Francis Gustus, but it's Jerry, Jerry Gustus. I go with a G, and address is Southern Memorial Drive.
Okay. All right. This time, we'll start, oh, and I'm going to explain to you, I don't know if you were in the hallway and you could hear me.
I wasn't sure if I was to come in or not, so I just haunted you.
We will not be making a decision tonight, because we have a number of candidates to interview at another meeting, so
Okay.
I just don't want you to sit there and say, well, they didn't pick me. Well, we're not picking yet. We'll start off with Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Gustus, thank you for coming out tonight, and thank you for applying.
Sure.
Had a chance to read through your citizen activity form. Sounds like you've got some very relevant experience.
I hope so.
So in the interest of time and making sure that my colleagues have a chance to ask questions, I'm going to ask you two questions, and we'll go from there. First one being, what is your understanding, as succinctly as possible, of this committee's mission?
That you have aging space that is in places unused or not being used to its best advantage, and you've got a possibly shrinking population. I haven't really seen all the data, but there's certainly some down numbers up at the high school, and you're looking to best configure things that, you know, best, delivers the best education to the students, gives a decent experience to teachers, and to saves the town money, because old buildings are expensive.
Absolutely. Thank you. And the last question I will ask is, it sounds like you have some experience being on some committees for a number of years in Andover. Is it a safe assumption that you are familiar with the open meeting law?
I am, yes.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Ms. Wellman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your application, Mr. Gustus. It's a pleasure to see you again. I have said this to the other two applicants, but I'll, I'll repeat my comments, that I like to write things out in advance, that's how I think through things best. So this work that we're appointing these folks to is important, forward-facing work that will take time and commitment, including mostly night meetings. This committee will require a quorum, hence the open meeting law question. So it's important to understand that if appointed, you will be expected to attend all the meetings and contribute to the body of the work. Is that a commitment you're willing to make?
It is. With the, with the gap between July 20th and July 31st, I'll be out of the country.
Vacation is not allowed in the service of this community.
I didn't say the V-word.
No, that's fine. That's great. Thank you. That's good to know.
Sure.
Yeah, no, summer vacations are, I understand people are traveling, and I will follow up with you later on where your trip is. So the select board is delegating members to represent this board's interest and the interests of the town in its entirety. As such, we're relying on our appointees to maintain open minds, to listen and learn about our, all of our facilities, our educational programming, our projections, and our financial position now and into the future. And the reason for that is so you can make the best recommendation as you go forward. I anticipate, having served on committees like this in the past myself, you will learn a lot of things you never knew
Oh, yeah.
You know, about the community, and you'll be, you'll know more, and as a committee, you'll know more than the rest of the residents do, and in the minutia, more than we will. And so we're relying on this group to be very informed. So are you prepared to make that commitment and not bring in preconceived notions about what you think may or may not be
Absolutely. Absolutely. In fact, I'm a two-year resident of Tewksbury, so I have no notions about any schools other than I do substitute up at the high school and I enjoy that. But, yeah, so no emotional attachments to one school over another. And schools drive emotional attachments very.
They do.
They do.
They do. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Mr. Reider. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, Mr. Gustus, thank you again for applying. I see, you know, as you stated, you're the chair of the redistricting while you were on the school committee in Andover.
Right.
One, could you point out what was one of the biggest challenges you had during that? Was it pushback of the committee? Was it pushback of specific residents, as it turned out? Kind of give us.
It was pushback.
That could come out of this.
Oh, sure.
This committee, and this is one of the things we want to look at, allocation of facilities for our students. So could you give one?
It had to be the pushback from the parents that were going to be affected from going from one school to another, particularly parents whose students were going into the fifth grade of their school. And I managed to sort of ring fence the fifth grade so that they didn't have to get pulled out for their fifth grade graduation because absolutely important to them and important to the parents. And so that's what it largely was. Most people could look at a map and say, oh, I'm not going anywhere. Or, oh, they're building the school three streets over. I'll be going to the new school. And they were just fine with that. It was a lot of, you know, people on the borders that could have gone either way, and there was a great deal of emotion about it.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. And welcome to Tewksbury as a two-year resident. And for someone that's only been here two years, I appreciate you submitting your application.
Sure.
I think that's great that someone that hasn't lived in the town very long is willing to bring their experiences to this. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'll set Mr. Chair.
Okay. You stole my question.
Ah. See, well. I get to.
So I'm just going to ask.
Mr. Krappman can ask a question?
What's that?
Mr. Krappman may have a question?
Oh, did I miss Mr. Krappman. I'm sorry.
Skippey. I'll be Sean Sweet. I had a couple of questions, like how long you been in the community? You already answered that?
Yeah.
You substitute at the high school?
I do.
You do. So have you had any experience of visiting any of the other schools in the community at all?
I, no.
No?
I think I substituted at the WIN for two days this year. And that age of student isn't for me.
Okay.
I need them to have a little more of a fastball than middle schools tend to do, so.
I got you. So, no, I.
Hopefully you're not middle school parents out here, so it's.
No, this is, thank God. Thank God.
All my kids are older now, but they went through all the schools here. And it's the institutional knowledge of, you know, some of these schools, as you said, have some sentimental attachment. And so, you know, when we were building the new elementary school, the seventh school, there was a push to put all, like four schools into it, and we got some pushback from the other, from the state, and so we still have two older schools in the community.
Yeah.
And that's my curiosity of, they're going to have to look and make some difficult decisions about, you know, revamping, building, whatever it may need and finding. Do you have any experience in, like, if there's something that needs to be, a search committee to find spaces and things like that that may come up or things like that? I know you sat on the redistrict.
Yeah.
But I just want to find out if you have any other experience being a school committee member.
One of the schools that we had in Andover was the Shawshine, and it was built in 1902. And by the time I got there at the end of the century on the school committee, it was pretty much being used as a K to two school. And it also had a big component of special needs that were still being evaluated, whether they should be mainstreamed or not. The school needed to be closed, and if we closed it for one day, we would have lost the space forever because once you close a school to reopen it in Massachusetts, it needs to meet all the various American Disability Acts and all of that stuff. So we held on to this school for my three years and a good five or so. I think my wife worked there until 2010 because they just couldn't let it go. But they finally, I think, came to the hard decision and they found enough space elsewhere to be able to put their programs where they needed to be. But, so that was, that was an interesting exercise throughout that committee.
Now, that's important information, having that institutional knowledge. I mean, there's only so much that you can write to us, and knowing that you're on the school committee, I knew you must have had some additional knowledge that.
Sure.
Of difficult decisions, and we're going to come up against some of the same sort of things where the same things may happen where, you know, you can't close it because it's not going to meet some of the things.
Right.
The issues we're going to go through. But you've answered all my questions, so thank you.
Sure.
All right. Since you stole my thunder here, I'll rephrase the question. While you were on the redistricting committee as being the chair, are there any decisions that you regret or you would have changed?
Well, no, I don't think so. And I had a strong sense back then that my efforts on the redistricting committee was why I felt 12 votes short of winning a second term on the committee because parents were upset with me. I was the point person of the committee and, you know, decisions had to be made. Actually, a decision had to be made in the form of a report that was brought to the rest of the committee who then approved it. But so, but even with that, and as it turned out, it was the best 12 votes I never got because I wound up in my business career doing much, much better than I would have had I stayed in Andover, stayed local, and stayed on the school committee, so.
But I want to thank you for your honesty because that actually did put something in my head about your honesty and you're not afraid to oppose something that another person is for.
And there's no reason that that can't be done, you know, respectfully and.
Right.
Collegially, right?
But you're stuck to your guns.
Sure.
Yeah, and I appreciate that.
Sure.
Okay, thank you for your time.
All right.
We will get back. Again, we still have to interview.
All right. Good luck with your decision.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is 6:30, and this Alexis, she's not being here.
Yeah, she sent an email.
So.
She wants to be appointed as a parent, part of the parent representative, and is that being done by the school committee?
I believe that it's being done by the school committee.
Okay.
They're supposed to send it to us.
Okay. We have, we don't have another interview for 10 minutes.
Okay, but you can still, we are in public session. We can go to board member reports.
Sure. Is that, are you looking at me to give one?
Go right ahead.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very briefly, the DEI committee had our pride event on the Common at the beginning of the month. It was a great success. The gazebo was lit up. We had great feedback. It was, a good time was had by all. You should have come down. There was good food. There was barbecue. We had music. It's a grand old time. And I appreciate the tremendous outpouring of support for members of our LGBTQ community here in Tewksbury. We have just a fantastic town, and it's great to see everybody be so welcoming on a fantastic, perfect sunny day. I ordered it special. See what I did? I did that.
That's it?
That's all I have right now.
Mr. Reider.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to follow up on the Economic Development Committee, we plan a meeting for July 24th at 6:00 PM. So information to follow. That's it.
Great. Great news.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Reider delivered the EDC update, so that's all I have.
Okay, and Mr. Krappman is not here, but Mr. Panellitis is. We can, you're scheduled at 6:45. We can take you a little early. How's that sound?
Whatever works for you.
Fill up.
Mr. Panellitis, if you could state your name and address for the recording secretary?
Bruce Panellitis, 218 Foster Road.
Okay, and as I told all the other candidates that we're not making a decision tonight. We're just going through the interviews because we have another round of interviews at the next meeting. So we'll start off with Mrs. Wellman, Ms. Wellman, I should say.
Ms. Wellman. Ms. Wellman, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Panellitis, for your application. I'm happy to see you again. I think you'll be able to answer those, I think I already know what your answers will be to these questions since I am well familiar with your service to the community, but I will give you the same treatment I gave every applicant. It's important to note that this is a forward-facing work that will take time and commitment, and it will include mostly night meetings. The committee requires a quorum, so it's important that you understand that if appointed, you will be expected to attend all of the meetings and contribute to the body of the work. Is that a commitment you are prepared to make tonight?
Yes.
Thank you. And the select board is delegating members to represent this board and the interests of the whole town while doing this work. As such, we're relying on our appointees to maintain an open minds and listen and learn about our facilities, our educational programming, our projections, and our financial position now and into the future, to make the best recommendations possible to this board and the school committee and the community at large at the end of this process. You and I have served on committees before. You understand that you'll get a tremendous amount of information that you don't have right now. And so it's important that we understand that you will be open-minded as you go through this and not be committed to potentially a preconceived notion. Are you prepared to make that commitment, sir?
Yep.
Thank you very much. Those are my questions.
Mr. Reider.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Panellitis, for your application. Being a public meeting, if you could just give us a little bit of background for those people that watching that don't know you, understand, thank you again. I know you've served on numerous town committees, athletic committees. I've worked with you a lot. So kind of just those that are watching, give us a little bit of background on yourself and how you can relate that to what we're looking at for this school committee.
Sure. So just specific to what's important for this role.
Yes, please.
Obviously, I served as a member and chair of the select board, served on the budget advisory committee for the school committee when that happened many, many years ago. Served on pretty much every parent advisory council for every school in our district, all the way from Heathbrook up through the high school when I had two high schoolers. As far as the school specifically, my job, I work for Tewks University. My daily job is managing a little over half a million square feet of lab and office space, teaching space. I advise both the dean of arts and sciences and the dean of school of engineering as to how we utilize the space we have. Space is, space is one of the biggest costs for any institution, but particularly for a university. So understanding which lab should have more space, which lab should have less space, how many conference rooms we need, how much teaching space we need, that sort of thing. I deal with that sort of data on a day-to-day basis and make decisions on those sorts of projects. And specifically with facilities, currently I'm on various construction committees for a $25 million electrical engineering building, about a $16 million project for a biology and earth and climate sciences building. And we're also renovating our science and engineering complex, which is roughly about a $12 million project. So very familiar with all the MEPs, all of the process that goes into construction and school, you know, educational facilities.
Okay. Thank you. Again, I just wanted to make sure that that was into the record. So thank you again.
You're welcome.
Krapp.
Yeah, I served with Mr. Panellitis on the select board when I first came on. It would have been many years ago. But Bruce, I know you've served on many committees in, you know, the town center plan. I know you've done a lot of work on the other things. I know you have many children that are in our school things. What do you take of the current conditions of the schools and what do you think we could be doing better?
So obviously, the high school, the center school are, you know, state of the art, pretty new facilities. And I think the committee and the administration have done well maintaining certainly the high school. It gets a lot of public use, and that's a, that's a challenge when we have so many people from the community using our facilities. Obviously, the Heathbrook and Dewing are in really poor shape. We should come up with a solution to replace those, not necessarily new buildings, but solutions to replace the capacity we need for those. I think the Ryan and Wynn are generally in okay shape. We've obviously spent some money in the last few years on everything from HVAC to roofs to things like that. I think if we stay on that, I don't think there's a need to immediately, at least from the evidence I have, you know, the information I have right now, it doesn't seem like those are schools that we'll have to replace anytime soon, and hopefully not, not in any of our service time. We don't want to go back to that well. So that's the basics. Obviously, it was good to get rid of the Treyhan and the North Street School. Those were pretty terrible facilities by the time we closed those down. Heathbrook and Dewing are pretty much there now, too.
And the only other thing is, you know, we're going to, looking at these, you've dealt with this in the community, looking at the cost aspect of that and, you know, trying to find something. And, you know, what would you, do you want to give some input on what you would feel like, you know, financially, how we should move forward on these type of things?
Yeah, I mean, I, obviously, I've made fairly public descriptions about what I thought we could have done in the recent town meeting. I don't want to, you know, sort of say this is exactly what we should do because I don't have all the information that Ms. Wellman talked about. But just looking at the numbers as they are currently, we are running at about 70% capacity. We have a lot of excess capacity in our, in our system. I think there are ways, if we are creative, we could drop the Dewing and the Heathbrook without building a new school. One idea would be to add on to the high school and move the seventh and eighth grade up into the high school facility, make it a junior and senior high school, and that would allow some shifts of grades. Center school becomes our lowest primary, you know, lowest elementary school and everything else at the Ryan and Wynn could shift as well. The Ryan facility, obviously, we're pretty much out of space over there by the time we added, added the center school. You've got the new stadium and everything, so that's pretty difficult to add anything there. The Wynn, I think, has some land if we ever had to do any kind of additions there. High school's a little tight, but I think there's some room if we move some of the functions around. So that would be my first look at it. But again, until we really have time to look at these sorts of things and look at the data, you know, it was noted that there's a lot of extra specials needed and, you know, extra help for students. How those are being done now, how they could be done more efficiently to better use space, that would be what I'd be interested in.
I appreciate it. Thank you for your.
Mr. Maggie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Panellitis, thank you for the application and as always, willing to engage and do more for our community. And I appreciate the out-of-the-box thinking you've presented on some of these topics. I have two questions, one of which is going to be a bit hilarious based on the discussion we've already had. But are you familiar with the open meeting law?
Yeah, I think I've heard about it before.
Trying to stick to the same two questions and make sure we're good. Thank you. I assumed as much. Second would be, as succinctly as possible, what is your understanding of this committee's mission? And what do you believe you can bring to it?
So my understanding is to look at current usage, current status of our facilities, and understand and try to put together a number of options for our elected boards to make decisions, and then eventually town meeting, of course, to make the ultimate funding decision for anything that has to happen. So advisory in its role, not going to make a final decision. Served on those sorts of committees before. It's a, it's a different role than the role, for instance, you guys have because this committee won't make any decisions. It'll make recommendations.
Perfect. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Again, thank you for your application. And I only have one question. And that is, you applied for the school building committee, we'll call it, and the town manager's search committee. Out of these two committees, which one would you prefer?
What, second place? I think, well, both. I mean, I'd be happy to serve on both, but I'm not sure that that's actually allowed based on the charter.
That's why I'm asking the question, because it's not.
I think I have more skills towards this one of the two. Certainly, my professional skills between my educational background, I have a master's in project management. I deal with this sort of stuff day-to-day. I think my skill set fits it better. Certainly, I was a select board member and chair. I could help finding a town manager, too. But I think others could, could do that role as well. So of the two, probably this one.
Okay, I appreciate that. I have no other questions. Everybody else seemed to have the same questions. I want to thank you for your time.
Mm-hmm.
Again, we're not making a decision tonight.
Understood.
We will get back in touch after we finish all of our interviews.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Bruce. Nice to see you.
We are done with interviews, so I'm going to go back to board member reports. And these we gave, Mr. Krappman, you are up.
I have an LRTA meeting this Thursday. Really nothing to report other than, you know, the new route is in place. That'll be taking place, traveling down the length of 38. The LRTA gave more information to the town, promoted it out to the community. And so the additional coverage of 38 is in process. So that's, hopefully, that'll benefit the community.
Okay, thank you. And the chair has nothing. So we are done with board member reports. How about minutes? We still have, we don't have another scheduled thing till 7 o'clock. Mr. Reider.
No, the minutes, I've gone through those and they'll be on the next meeting report.
Okay.
My apologies on that. Apollo was on vacation. We were playing a little back and forth with some clarifications, but they're all set, so.
We're just going to go up to this here. Mr. Montori, town council invoice.
I just kept there.
Going backwards.
Exactly, I know.
We're so efficient. Mr. Chairman, while Mr. Montori is doing that, I remembered something that I can add on board member reports. NIMCOG recently had a strategy session, and they're working to finish their strategic planning. And so we had a multi-community session last week in Lowell that was very well-attended. And Mr. Sadler attended for the town as well. I was there as well. It was a, it was a great session. And then the MPO meeting is tomorrow where there are going to be lots and lots and lots of conversations about upcoming transportation projects in the region.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the Town Council invoice, the invoices from May 16 through May 31 in the amount of $5,275, and I would recommend approval.
So moved, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Ms. Wellman, second by Mr. Ryder. All those in favor, does anybody say aye?
Aye.
And she votes aye as well. Mr. Krabman, you vote aye as well?
I do.
Okay, that's 5-0. Okay, what do we get for time here? Mr. Montori, you take us through the updated financial management policies in 10 minutes? Or should we take a break?
Sure. We can do that. We can also go into new business and go over the donation from the Congregational Church, if you want to do that, too.
Okay.
So, the financial policy that's provided is similar to the board's financial policy that they've had in place for quite some time with the addition of what's added in yellow regarding OPEB. And this was recommended by our actuary who handles our OPEB valuation, that they'll be starting in July, and we felt if the policy was updated, it would both help us during the valuation and the, when we go off for our next bond rating, which will probably be in August or September. The biggest change in the policy, when you look at it, it just outlines how we intend to address our OPEB liability using any additional funds that we have, whether it's free cash or any other additional funds that we may have in the given year. But also, the biggest part is when our pension liability is paid off somewhere around 2035, that we utilize those funds to start helping pay down the OPEB liability when those funds become available. And we're not committed to using all of those funds as we get closer to that date when our pension liability is paid off. The board at that time can adjust and use whatever number they want. And they can put most of it or all of it towards OPEB. They can put just what's needed and then use the money to fund other things. But it gives the financial institutions as well as our actuaries at least the policy, what the board plans to do in the future with funding our OPEB liability.
Okay. Board members, any questions? We'll start with Mr. Krabman.
Well, when I'm sitting here in 2035, no. That's a long way away. No, I agree. That's one of the things that we've been trying to get to, that higher rating, and that's the thing that seems to be holding us back. And so, finding a way of putting that in, that seems to be the only thing that holds us back each year when we get the report of trying to get that number down. And it's trying to, we have a lot of cost in this community. I know we have a lot of needs, you know, water and sewer, other things that we're having, but finding the money to put toward there, I think, is very important. So, I think this is a great policy to put in place. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Maggie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the Town Manager, one question on the, which section is this? It's the last page. What I did not catch last time, and this may be a new addition, was the inclusion of general fund, water enterprise fund, sewer enterprise fund, cable enterprise fund. So, I know it had general fund on the before. Are the enterprise funds a recent addition?
We wanted to make sure we identified those funds because each of those funds is paying their required amount.
Okay.
When you look at what we appropriated, town meeting, there is a line for OPEB funding, and each of them right now is paying exactly what the actuary projections are asking them to pay.
Okay.
So, we wanted to call that out. So, when people review this, especially the financial institutions, they can, they know that the enterprise funds are funding it.
So, they're covering their piece of the pie, not?
And when the actuary does the valuation, he spells out general fund and then those other funds, exactly what each of them has to pay.
Perfect. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Ms. Wellman?
Thank you. I actually wanted to ask you about that as well, Mr. Montori. The language, I just want to be clear, the language is it's a minimum of $650,000, it's appropriated. Is that from the general fund specifically, or is that across the general fund and the enterprise funds together?
That's the general fund.
That's just the general?
Yeah, the general fund will pay what is required in the valuation. So, we didn't want to put a number because that could change every year.
And the other funds are all apportioned based on their usage and their liability?
Based on the actuaries. Yep.
Right, but it's an apportionment, it's not just, that's how he bases, the actuary is basing. When was the last OPEB valuation done?
Couple, two years ago. We have a new one going.
So, you're up, yeah.
And we provide all the information for the general fund and each enterprise fund, and that's how he comes up with the numbers.
I think that I would prefer if the language said at a minimum of $650,000 appropriated in the general fund budget, and then a separate phrase or and, you know, apportioned as directed by the, as recommended by actuarial services for the remaining funds. Just to separate that, it's not, I don't want in the future a different board to interpret $650,000 cut across the four funds when money is tight to think that they're meeting the letter of the policy. Does that make, do you know what I'm saying?
Yep. We can, if the board's okay, we can make that clarification.
Yeah, fix it and post.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah. Okay, that was my only, I think this is an excellent policy. I'm really, really glad to see this come forward at this time. Hopefully, that'll help us get that AAA bond rating. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Through Mr. Chair, to the, Mr. Manager. Part of the language, understanding right now we're not paying any salaries out of the Stormwater Enterprise. Should we put that in this if in the future we decide that Stormwater will have its own positions?
We can add that.
And spell that out similarly?
Yep, we can add that to the, also.
Similarly, too, as Ms. Wellman stated, their portioned share, because understanding that's currently coming from the general fund, but we may move to that as budgets may allow as we get farther into the, our infrastructure repairs, we may be able to shift some of that general fund to Stormwater funding for those positions.
If we can add, we can do that. If the board's comfortable and they vote to add those two additions, we'll do that.
Okay. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so, Mr. Montori, is he in a motion on this, or do you want to come back with the updated version?
It'd be helpful because fiscal year is going to end next week, and I'd like to get it done. So, if you can vote to approve it with both changes, I'll make sure we review the tape just to get it right, and we'll include it in the policy.
Okay. So, with that being said, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the overall financial management policy with the two adjustments that were made by the board.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Mr. Krabman, second by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, sitting in five by saying aye?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye as well. That's 5-0 vote. Okay, next, I think we're at 7:00 then. We are 6:58, so I don't think we're going to get to the new business. We'll take a two-minute break. Our next item on our agenda is the Tewksbury State Hospital. Is there anyone here for that?
Please go.
Welcome to the hot seat, whatever it is. Yeah? Move right up. Just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Amy Dumont, and I am the CEO at Tewksbury Hospital.
Okay.
Welcome.
Good evening. Greg Herr, I'm the Chief Operating Officer, Tewksbury Hospital. Nice to meet you.
Welcome to both of yous.
Thank you.
Okay. We're here because, I think, Mr. Krabman, we're going to start off with you. You had questions or?
I do. So, I know this is a state hospital. I understand you're under guidelines that are driven by the state, but in our community, you know, we've, we have some concerns. We've seen a lot of instances where there's been people walking off the grounds. We're not sure if they're from the hospital, from different programs. And, you know, it's in an area where all your entrances and exits are in a sensitive area of our community. You know, one driveway comes out by Livingston Street Playgrounds, and one comes out by a senior center, and one comes out by a library. And so, I have concerns that it just seems like the, the problems seem to be uptaking. It just seems like there's, seems to be more and more problems in the community, and before it gets worse, I want to get some answers of what's going on. Why, is there enough security up there? How are people leaving the grounds? I know there was an instance of somebody assaulting somebody and stabbing somebody. That happened. I know somebody was found that was behind the senior center. I found, you know, there's a lot of different things that have happened. And then, we also have nurses in our community, we have a lot of people that live in this community that have worked there. And then, we're getting reports that they feel unsafe in the area. And what's being taken place to make sure that the residents that work there are safe and that people that are staying there or programs that are running there are not jeopardizing the safety of our community. So, that's pretty much how I want to start off.
Sure.
Okay. I actually prepared a statement because I anticipated a lot of the questions and, again, the media attention. So, if you are okay, I will start with that, and hopefully, that will answer some of your questions. So, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening and to speak about the issues related to safety and security that affect both our hospital and town of Tewksbury. I'm Amy Dumont, and I'm the CEO of Tewksbury Hospital, a position I've held since September 2022. On behalf of Tewksbury Hospital and the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, I want to express my deepest gratitude to the Tewksbury Police Department, Fire Department, and the town of Tewksbury in the ongoing collaboration and support. You are vital partners in the work we do to take the best care of our patients possible, some of the most complex patients in the Commonwealth. We understand how critical the relationship between the hospital and the community are. We value them deeply and want to do what we can to preserve and strengthen them. Tewksbury Hospital was established in 1854, originally the state almshouse offering shelter and basic necessities to the poor, homeless, elderly, immigrant, disabled, and diseased. The almshouse were placed, places that took in and took care of those who needed frankly more care and were unwelcome anywhere else and could not afford care. People feared them, abandoned them, or shunned them. The almshouse in the 1800s laid the groundwork for the development of a more formalized public health program and hospital system that has emerged in the last two decades. Tewksbury Hospital today is one of four public health hospitals under, operating under the oversight of the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. True to its original mission, the medical and behavioral needs, we continue to play a vital role in the complex care of patients, often served as the last resort who have been turned away from multiple facilities. The dedicated staff at Tewksbury, every day, deliver care with dignity and respect, helping each patient reach the highest level of independence. Let me share a few key statistics. Tewksbury Hospital each day delivers care to approximately 200 medical inpatients, 170 behavioral health patients. In FY '23, the average length of stay for a medical patient was 192 days, and on the psychiatric services, 171 days. Tewksbury Hospital employs approximately 960 healthcare workers, as well as more than 450 agencies, contractors, vendors, students, and volunteers. Tewksbury Hospital sits on an 800-acre campus with 42 buildings. The campus is also home to 26 external programs that operate in various buildings on the property. Tewksbury takes seriously its responsibility to provide safe environment for all. That said, we acknowledge there has been an issue related to safety on the campus. These situations have created concern for the community and place a burden on local emergency services. We also recognize that these situations demand a strong and swift and effective response. We are committed to responding and addressing and preventing safety problems on campus and in the community. We have implemented a wide range of measures, both at the campus level and throughout collaborative efforts with the local emergency services and law enforcement, to address safety issues and concerns. Efforts undertaken during the past 18 months include holding ongoing meetings with Tewksbury Hospital leadership, Massachusetts State Police, Tewksbury Police, Tewksbury Town Manager, and the Department of Public Health Deputy Commissioner to discuss safety-related issues across all agencies, adding 19 cameras to the existing camera network, providing more thorough means of monitoring the campus exterior, securing access paths with gates to the back parking lots and middle school, adding two additional security vehicles to make regular rounds across the campus, implementing the home and health alert network so employees can receive emergency communication. We implemented a code 33 pound to provide a unifying number for all campus emergencies. We recently offered active shooter training to employees. Thirty-five of them recently completed the training and will be able to continue to train other employees in our organization. We are currently recruiting for a Director of Safety and Security and Emergency Management, which is a new role for the hospital. One of the most significant actions we have taken this year involves conducting a comprehensive external safety and security assessment for our campus, infrastructure, equipment, safety protocols, practices, and training. This ongoing assessment is being led by Tom Turco, who served as the Head of Executive Office of Public Safety and Security. The assessment has included two retired state police officers, Tewksbury Police, as well as campus security throughout the review. This assessment has been focused on reviewing hospital security measures to make sure that they are aligned with best practice and industry standards, strengthening the coordination and communication between hospital security, local law enforcement, and emergency services, and identifying specific vulnerabilities and recommending improvements. The preliminary recommendations of this assessment include making improvements in the hospital entry and exit security, investing in advanced technology to improve security measures, better control the flow on the campus, strengthening and expanding campus security department, enhancing safety and security policies and procedures, required safety training for all staff, improved patient elopement procedures, continue building strength, continue building and strengthening the relationship with the town, improving and affirming vendor accountability. We hope to release the report soon. It presents an important opportunity to enhance the safety and security on the campus for patients, staff, and town personnel. We are committed to- We are committed to collaborative process with the town to implement its recommendations. In closing, I want to emphasize once again that Tewksbury Hospital is dedicated to being a safe, responsible, and valuable member to this community. We are committed to continuous improvement. We welcome your input and collaboration as we work together to protect the safety and the well-being of the wonderful people in this incredible town in which we live and work. Thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak to you this evening.
Thank you. And I apologize for not letting you read it at first. Mr. Maggie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for coming out tonight, and thank you for the statement. It did answer a number of my questions. The way I see it, you all are a part of our community, and I appreciate all of the, the controls you just mentioned. So my first question is, do you have a timeline for when those controls will start to be implemented?
So we're reviewing the report as it's coming to our attention. We will be working with our internal team, as well as the consultant team. We will provide a timeline. We will be looking at all the financial implications as well that will need to look at any kind of construction. And currently, I have the Assistant Deputy Commissioner here from DPH, and we have the support of the Secretariat and the Governor's Office. So that will be coming soon.
Mr. Maggie, I think it's important too to note that while that's a, that's a lot. What Amy just read is a lot, and it's a comprehensive report. It's a comprehensive list of items. What Amy and I feel is important for the town, the Tewksbury Hospital community, everyone is that we don't sit on our hands and wait until we have X, Y, and Z in place. So while that looks like a lot, huge comprehensive list, majority of those things have already been taking place. So policies and procedures are updated. Entranceways are secured and locked down to badge access. New emergency procedure codes are already set in place. So while there are some longer-term items that are still in place, many of the things that Amy had read through are already implemented, already moving down the road. We have additional police, you know, security vehicles on, on campus today. You know, we have a, a, a new position that we're currently interviewing for, the Director of Safety and Security. So a lot of these things are already either complete or already on the, on the runway for takeoff, so.
Perfect. Thank you. So just to circle back, I'm glad you guys are already making progress and not, as you put it, sitting on your hands. That would, that would not go over well. But do you have a projection on when that timeline might come out?
The actual report?
Yeah. So the report, and then you said there's a, there's a timeline for the recommendations.
So I would say that we would probably, once we have the final report that has been approved, I would say our timeline to actually create a plan and really look at it on when we could operationalize, what resources we need, would probably be within a month or 60 days.
Perfect. And kind of moving forward, those meetings with Tewksbury Police, Fire, Tom Minter's office, those are staying in place, correct?
Yeah.
Awesome.
I think they'll be more formalized than they have been. We've had a more formal relationship with Tewksbury Fire in evaluating any of the calls and any issues, but not as consistent with the other entities. So we'll have a more standard meeting time.
Perfect. Thank you. Yeah, so again, there have been obviously a plethora of issues. I know you all are also dealing with internal issues with staffing and funding and all these other things, so I'm glad to hear you have the support of the Secretariat for this. One thing I just want to put out there, and this is less for you all and more for the residents, is again, as I said, you all are part of our community. And if we don't find a way to kind of improve or continue to improve our partnership, and we keep having complaints and issues, all that's going to do is increase the likelihood that the state hospital gets shut down, or there are other funding issues. And I would remind everyone that the state owns a vast majority of land in Tewksbury, and if facilities start getting shut down, we've already seen the state's trend on what they like to do with that land, which is develop housing, which I don't think anybody in Tewksbury wants. So I would much rather find a way to continue to improve our relationship and make sure that your security and safety concerns are addressed for not only your, your patients and employees, but our residents, because as was mentioned, your facility is kind of surrounded by some of our most critical assets in town with our most vulnerable population. So I appreciate you all coming out again tonight and look forward to continuing the discussion. Thank you.
Ms. Wellman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for being here this evening. I am tremendously encouraged to see you here, and I view this as the beginning of, at least with the, the public board, a really good relationship and, and conversation between us. And so I am very grateful that you're here. I really appreciate your statement. I appreciate the Deputy Director being here from DPH. I'm encouraged by this, and, and I'm, and I'm grateful for that because as my colleagues have said, there have been prior, before all of you were involved, these problems have been, have been happening. I really loved the piece about improving patient elopement procedures. That's really, really important. That's kind of the crux of what's brought us here, you know, just that particular piece in addition to others. My mother had 55 years of nursing and gerontology, and my father was a hospital CEO. So I understand a little bit in Maine, the degree of the complexity of the work that you do and that your staff does. And, and it's tremendously important to the Commonwealth that you're serving these patients. I have visited friends who have their children, their adult children there. I have, I have done volunteer work with different programs that have been at the state hospital for sobriety and recovery, particularly with women and children. So you provide services to the state and to vulnerable populations in the state that are not served adequately at all anywhere else. So I thank you for that work, and I please, I ask that you take that back to your staff and let them know that their work and their individual contributions are valued. I, I love seeing that you've taken steps as you've gone. That's really important, and it's great to communicate that. My chief concern, first, I can't wait to see this report. I really look forward to that. I've been talking about these issues for a long time from a funding perspective, and it's been my view that Tewksbury State Hospital has been underfunded by the state tremendously over the years. And I'm talking to you back there. That's who I'm talking to. And I'm talking to our legislators, and they've, they've heard this from all of us on this board and our predecessors on this board for a long time, that the hospital provides a critical service to the state, to the residents of the state, and to the safety and security of the people who live in this town to support this hospital and to your employees. So it's important that you are appropriately funded. In addition to that, this community has, in many ways, and this is, this is my spin on it, has funded, you know, the state, and we have, through our taxpayers, by providing emergency medical services and police services to the state hospital, because in the past they have been underfunded and that need has been there. I also understand, and I appreciate that our police department likes having the relationship where they can go and serve you because we know what's going on, and we can provide those resources, and we want to be called immediately when there's someone missing, when we want to be involved, because we, our police department does a great job. I have advocated to our legislative delegation that we are included in pilot funding for state-owned lands. That's not on you, that's on them, but I'm asking you, Mr. Deputy Director. Tewksbury deserves to be funded for the work that we do. It's important work, and it should not be borne by the taxpayers to, of Tewksbury, to supplement the budget of a state operation as complex and important as this one is. I sometimes find that public health is underfunded. It's not sexy. It, it costs money, and it is, it is often the most vulnerable populations. And I think as a society, how we treat our vulnerable populations tells a lot about who we are. So those are my comments, not really a lot of questions. I'm, like I said, I'm very encouraged by the work that's happening. I really thank our police chief and our fire chief who are here today, our town manager, and I think both of you and all of your staff who have worked together to make this situation better. We all understand it's untenable, and we're all individual people, and only through working together can we make situations better and communicating and being transparent. I hope we see you here again, and we talk more, and I'm happy to come to you and hang out with you guys. Have great stuff going on. But thank you, thank you very much for this work, and please keep up the good work and push. And I will come push with you because the funding has to happen. We can fund certain things, we can do hard things. This is hard work that the state needs to do better to support. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you again. Thank you for your statement. I'll follow up on what Ms. Wellman said. I think finance, finance is the most critical thing there. Again, the town, recent new member to the board, but 20-year, living in this town. And my wife's lifelong resident and remembers going back when, you know, they would, their Girl Scouts groups would go there. And understanding the importance of the state hospital, but also when we understand when we get those phone calls from the resident that has lived here for 25 years, that is out walking their grandchild or out walking their dog, and they ask us the question, what about my rights? And, and that's, and that, that's a big concern, you know? As a taxpayer in this town, and people call us that I pay a lot of money in taxes. We provide a lot of services to the state hospital. Does the state administration understand the impact, truly understand the impact on our community? I know the police chief has advocated, the fire chief has advocated, the town manager, but do they truly know the impact on the residents of our community? And that, that is critical. I mean, as, as we're sitting here, we're the face, we're the voice for those residents when they don't have the ability to come speak to the director. Does the administration understand how critical some of the situations there are? And I understand this assessment's coming out. I think that's amazing. I think this is the first step. But, you know, been involved in politics, in municipal government, 30 years, I've seen assessments done, and sometimes when, you know, it's a hot topic, it's here, but it tends to sometimes get put to the back burner because finances are a critical component of that. And as you spoke about, all these security measures coming into play, new positions, is the commitment there? We hear the commitments there, but to the residents listening tonight and workers that are listening tonight, is the commitment truly there? And does the administration understand that this meeting was called because of a reason that, you know, thanks for Mr. Krappman pulling this together. I know you've met with town administration, but, you know, above you, I know you're the face, and you have to deal with it, and I, and I understand that. But does, you know, the layers above you know how critical this is and the impact on our community? Not just to the residents, but also through our services? You know, our, our police and fire is being impacted, the number of calls that are there. You know, I understand we're getting some funding, you know, thanks to our legislature, but that's not guaranteed. That's through an earmark. Is the administration committed to providing those funds in a, in the form of a budget line item, whether it be through the state hospital and transferred to the, the town, whether we set up some, whether it's a pilot, whether we set up some administrative billing for services? We want to make sure that we're getting those funds to provide to the police and fire departments to be able to offset some of those costs. So again, I just want to make sure that commitment's there. I want people listening tonight and maybe the administration, in maybe six months after this report comes out, we can have another meeting and see where we are on a checklist to understand. And, and that, and that's going to be the proof in the reporting. Is, six months from now, where are we?
Yep.
After we come out with the assess, the assessment? Where are we in a year? So that's really going to show us the dedication, show us the commitment from the administration back to the community. So again, I'm hopeful, you know? I'll be optimistic, but I am a realist, and I understand, you know, the budgets, the state budgets were just cut. Where does that leave the programs and the new programs that are going to need to be had, done and come out of this assessment?
Yeah, no, thank, thanks for those comments. I'm the newer one of the, of the group here. I've been here a little less than a year now. I personally, as part of the administration of the hospital, feel that there is commitment there. I can speak to that really by our, our key position that we felt we needed. It was a brand-new position, the Director of Safety and Security that we are currently recruiting for, had to be, even during a, a budget freeze, had to be approved throughout the entire chain of, of, you know, Massachusetts government, that they felt, we felt and pushed along, and they felt that that was an important liaison between us and the town and the police department and the fire department. So me personally, I feel very strongly that, that we have a lot of commitment behind us to, to continue to move this forward. Amy and I, we bring the passion behind it all, and we, we're going to bring the, you know, the, the engine to move it all, and that's the commitment I think we provide to, to all you folks here in the town. But I personally feel pretty committed that, that we're able to move some of these things, and we're looking at things differently now than we have, you know, a year, or two, or 10 years ago for certain. So any of those 20-year residents, it's a different way of thinking between us now. So, and I think, you know, it has to be. The healthcare has changed dramatically, so that's my own.
Okay. Well, I, I appreciate that, and again, I, you know, I'll, I'll be optimistic, and I'm, I'm hopeful, because I think the residents in town deserve that. And I understand, you know, I'll call them the residents at the state hospital or the individuals there getting their treatments and services. They're committed to, and the workers, being there safely, working safely, going there, getting their treatment done safely, and the facility is secure. So looking forward to reviewing the assessment and, you know, six months from now.
Six months from today is Christmas, Mr. Ryder.
Well, we'll see you on the 23rd.
That's a Christmas present, yes.
It won't be on, it won't be on the Christmas, but it'll be on the, you know, but again, you know, six months, seven months, a timeframe that we can see some real action taken and a real plan. And I think that's the first step, is the plan. The assessment is, you know, is, that's great. You can find all the flaws and all the, the items that we need to work on, but the plan is the critical thing. And then, you know, find the low-hanging fruit. What can we hit right away? We know what we have funding. Maybe those low-hanging items, we can get addressed immediately. But the long-term items, making sure that those stay on the radar and the funding is there. But I'm looking forward to it. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Again, thank you for, for coming.
Mr. Chairman, before you're done, I just, I wasn't finished with my questions.
Okay, go right ahead.
Okay. I, I just, thank you very much. After you read your statement, I wanted to ask a couple more. So the number of patients that you're receiving, has that increased dramatically in the last couple of years, or is it staying level compared to what?
Well, so the, I guess the biggest issue is COVID had a significant impact to any admission to any of the hospitals because of what was happening. So for a period of time, the admission rate was slow. The maximum capacity today in the hospital is 213 beds for medical, of which we're, on average, 200 patients housed at the hospital. We can have up to 185 psychiatric patients, but because of staffing and staffing constraints, we can only safely care for 170. So that is our maximum capacity. So we were not operating at that. We were probably operating at 170 patients during COVID and maybe 130 to 140 for psychiatric during COVID for that two-year period.
So during this time, when you have 170 or 130, how many, how many security do you have on premises at that, at that time?
So we have a total of chief, five sergeants, and I think it's 18 police officers. The detail usually is five on days, five on evenings, and four on nights.
Mr. Chair, we have our police and fire here in the audience, and since they're here, I would like to hear their thought process on how things have, they're working with them, and I'd like to get their input on how things are running up there, and if they have anything to say about it. So if the police chief could come up, I...
It's on? There we go. All right. Ryan Columbus, police chief. Thank you for being here. There's a lot going...
There's a lot going on. There's a lot that's been done over the last, I would say, couple of years. I will say this, I grew up in this town. I live in this town. I've been a police officer almost 25 years here. This is not a new problem. And I think it's important to know that my commitment is to the community, to the staff that works there, and the patients. If a patient escapes and they're a danger to themselves, there needs to be practices in place for that patient, not just about the community. It's for everybody. I think Amy has done a fantastic job. I think she's been up against it. She's trying to change something that has been in place for a couple decades. And we don't make improvements over time. These things kind of go by the wayside. And I think that's what's happened over the years. But early on, we met, we had conversations about, you know, things that we were trying to, you know, accomplish or issues that I had. And she's always been receptive to me and the calls that we've had. And I think that, you know, just getting the cameras or getting vehicles, I think, you know, is a good step. So, what I'll say, just to conclude this, is that I'm optimistic that we're heading in the right direction. So, do you have any questions for me while I'm here?
No, that's what I want to hear. It just, it seemed like it was, it seemed like a lot more were happening recently. I wanted to get your input. I know we have, police and fire are up there quite a bit. There's not a day that I don't see a vehicle heading to Tewksbury State Hospital going up there. I want to make sure our police and fire feel safe going to the facility. And I also want to get your input. You're the expert. And I value your opinion on that. And I...
I feel as well that there have been changes that have been made, I would say, in the last maybe six or seven months. We've seen a significant decline in people walking away. And I think that that's, that's good, right? That's what we want. And in that instance where someone did, I think it was a month or two ago, did walk away, they did call us right away. And we were able to get that information where that wasn't happening in the past. They did call us right away. We were able to locate that person within 20 minutes. So, that's significant. We've talked about that. I know that's a policy. And, you know, again, they're trying to train their staff on these new policies and procedures. So, again, the fact that an independent security assessment occurred at this facility is a huge step. I'm hopeful that we see that report. And I'm hopeful that there's real change that happens over the next six months and then even further down the road and the continued investment in the safety and security of that building for everybody involved.
Thank you. And when that report comes out, I would like to have the chief give us an update on that of what your take on it is, get your opinion. I'd like the fire chief as well to look at that and give us what your opinion is, if it's enough.
Yeah. Well, I will tell you that the assessment team did work closely with us. They heard our concerns. They heard our recommendations. So, we were involved in this process significantly. And we got some back and forth, some of the issues that they uncovered. And like I said, I'm optimistic that we're heading in the right direction. And I'm grateful for Amy and her team because I do think she's doing a great job. Although state government, she deals with a lot of things above her. But I've been told that the governor knows about this and supports it. So, we'll see where it goes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And our goal is not to, you know, find fault. Our goal is to, we're here to represent the residents of Tewksbury. And they come to us and they ask us questions. And they want to feel safe in their community. So, that's important to me, to hear that. It's great to do an assessment. I want to see follow-through. I don't want to see other instances happen. I don't want to see it continue. I want to find the ways to make everybody safe, to have your facility go well. And we'll lobby for you. If there's funding or whatever it may be, we'll call our delegation. We'll do whatever we need to do to make sure your facility runs properly. But I also want to make sure, like I said, this is in an area where we have a very active senior center, a very active library. And we tell families to send their children to Livingston Street because they should feel safe there. I want to be able to tell them that your kids are safe there without having that worry that, God forbid, something happens. And I do worry about that. So, you know, having that input and putting down, you go down Livingston Street on a weekend, there's not a parking spot open. So, that's great that people are using our fields, but they should be able to send their children and not worry about, you know, is somebody going to down there harm them? And having a facility where people can get away from is a scary proposition. So, I just want you to take that in consideration. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Eric, I have one question. For you, to the state hospital representatives or to the police chief, understanding the new cameras, does the police department have access to, can you stream that camera system to the station?
Not currently.
Mike, can I have your mic?
My apologies. I'll repeat that question. So, is there access to stream for the police department to connect live to the camera system? Because I think if that's not in the assessment, and if that's not something that can be done now, I think that something is critical because that can help, you know, that can change five minutes, 10 minutes into an hour or two hours if an individual has left the property. You know, the security guards saw them leave in the west campus. Well, actually, no, we're looking at cameras. It's the east campus. So, east entrance. If that's not in the assessment or if that's something that can be done, I think that is critical. That would help speed up and expedite any issues. And I don't know if the chief wants to speak to that or if you have the ability, understanding it's one of the larger pieces of property in town and probably the one with the most security issues at this moment. So, I think having that ability would be critical and a key piece of equipment.
Yeah. So, the, not yet.
Okay.
But I will tell you, without getting into all the details, that this report is, from what I'm being told from the assessors, is extremely comprehensive.
Excellent.
And it has every detail that you could possibly bring up today. And I'm comfortable with what I believe the assessors did. I'm excited to see that report because at the end of the day, the goal is to make everybody safe and feel good about our partnership and the services that we provide and they provide. So, not yet, but I think the cameras are fairly new. And there are, you know, concerns about patients' privacy and those things. And we have to respect that.
Sure.
So, but that was brought up. And that's something that, again, that this report is extremely comprehensive, every detail, more detail than I thought that would be in it. I haven't seen it, but just from the word of mouth that I got from the assessors.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Well, at least we have the start of a conversation, you know? It's about time, you know? I only have one thing. And this, I'm not going to beat the thing on the finances. Everybody else did that. With HIPAA laws today, you know, if somebody commits a crime in Arlington, and let's say it's a bad crime, and they're arrested and they're sent to Tewksbury, does the chief know or does the police department know that that person is at Tewksbury Hospital? Is there any communication there?
Not to my knowledge because there are. Chief Columbus, you want to address that one?
That's a no.
Okay. So, there is no, you're not aware of anybody?
No. And again, I think that comes down to the patient's rights. I mean, they're there for a medical reason. I think, you know, we have to be careful of that line we walk. I mean, we certainly don't want information we shouldn't have, right? And we have to respect the privacy of a patient. So, we don't get that information, no.
But the hospital has that information?
No. In some cases, we do not have the information either.
So, if somebody is brought to the hospital from a police department, you're not, you're unaware of why that person is there other than?
We may, if they are court ordered and they have a forensic reference to that, we might have some detail, but we will not have the detail that the chief has at his fingertips on many of these patients.
Okay. That kind of concerns me, just in case if somebody, somebody escapes or walks away. I mean, how are they supposed to know? Or if the ambulance is going to show up, I'm not going to use ax murderer or anything else like that. But, you know, the ambulance driver doesn't know what this guy's capable of. And that's what I'm referring to when it comes to, is the chief aware? Doesn't have to be personal or anything else like that. But there is a person in here who did this. You know, you don't have to give the name or anything. But it should be, I think, something should be in your report that allows the Tewksbury Police and Tewksbury Fire know that there's, again, no name, but something that's there if they get a call for that person.
But again, we may not have that information because I know when chief has run some of the other patients, information that he has is information we've never seen on that patient.
Okay.
So, we may not even have the purview of the length of history, criminal intent, any of that information because they're truly coming to us for medical treatment or psychiatric treatment and evaluation.
Okay. All right. Well, we started the conversation. I appreciate you coming in. Your presentation was fine. And I, again, I apologize for not letting you go first. And I do look forward to the report. And I do look forward to Christmas Eve when we're all here.
There you go.
Mr. Ryder said so, six months, and see where we stand then. I appreciate you being here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is American Outside Advertising: How Else See Special Department Application for Billboard. Is there anyone here for that?
Yes.
Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Jeremy Cutler for American Outside Advertising. Mr. Steven Ross. I'm at 31 Ironwood in Tewksbury. And I represent the petitioner, Steven Ross.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, this is a petition for an electronic billboard at 1775 Andover Street in Tewksbury, the Marriott Hotel property. A couple of years ago, Town Meeting passed a bylaw to encourage these as a revenue source for the town. Even though we're located right on 93 and 495, very few locations, they'll actually support one. And this seems to be one of them. It's in an office research district. It's on the International Place side, faces 495. There's no spillover. All the dimensional requirements are there. We have a permit with the, I mean, we have a lease with the Marriott Hotel, who's the landowner. They're very much in favor of it. It's a revenue source for them. They don't think it impacts their commercial enterprise in any way. And we think it's a really good thing for the town. We have a host agreement that we proposed that will provide significant revenue to the town over the 20-year term of the lease and even an additional 20 years if it gets extended at that point in time down the road. So, we think it's a benefit for the town, good revenue source. And we would hope that you would approve it. I think we met all the qualifications. Dimensional requirements are in there. They meet the standards that were set in the bylaw. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We'll start off with Mr. Ryder.
So... Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a couple of questions in regards to the sign location. And I know, I'm sure there'll be some other questions with the bylaw within residential district. So, I know through you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Sadwick is here. Maybe he could shed some light on that and some clarification.
Good evening. If you look closely at the way that the bylaw is written, it does say that it's 1,000 feet from residential district or residential use. Currently, that, when you look at 1,000 feet from that site, we don't have a residential use or district. So, they meet that currently. There was a comprehensive permit that was granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals for converting the hotel to housing, residential rental. And we would be, that project in and of itself actually put us back over the 10% threshold for 40Bs. So, there have not been building permits pulled. So, we're at a point where there's kind of a technicality of it's operating currently as a commercial use. But we know that we have issued a permit that will allow for it to become a residential use. So, it's kind of a very fine line.
Would, I, through you, Mr. Chair, would we be creating a nonconformity by allowing this? So...
Yes.
Right. By our own admission, we'd be creating a nonconformity?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Ms. Wellman.
Mr. Ryder asked exactly the question I had. So, I have been a proponent of the billboard bylaw. I thought the 1,000 feet was too big, but that was what Town Meeting approved. So, that was a change that was made on Town Meeting floor. I was there that day. So, I've been generally in favor of a billboard, you know, opportunity here in the community. I think with maybe one or two other locations, well, together, altogether. But I also understand that this is about to become a residential use and succinctly pointed out that it will be a nonconformity. And I don't love that the first opportunity we have to do a billboard, we break our own rules. So, I would, I don't really love that. And Mr. Sadwick just, and you pointed out my concern. So, I don't really have anything to add. So, this time.
I would say just, the intent of that 1,000 feet was primarily neighborhoods, though, and communities, you know, things like that. Not, this is still going to be a commercial enterprise. And they may never act on it. Marriott has the right, but they may never act on it. There's been plenty of permits in buildings up and down 38 where people have the right to convert their properties that have never been acted upon. So...
That's an excellent point, Mr. Cutler. I do appreciate that point and bringing that clarification. This town really needs that housing. And I want to see that housing built. And I would like to see that. That is the priority. This board has expressed an interest for years on housing development and particularly affordable housing. And I understand the owners of that facility sought that. They came to us and asked to do that. And we want to see that work. And that will be a neighborhood once it turns to that use. It will be a residential community. And that's an important use for that space in town. It's an innovative use. I love to see it. And so, if that comprehensive permit were turned over and they said, "We don't want to do that anymore," then I'd be more open to, okay, they're going to stay commercial. I have no issue. But I don't, I don't think that, I don't love the idea of the board saying, "Well, there's this technicality and we can kind of slide it in and that, you know, and then it's fine. And now we have a billboard." And we know what has been stated, what has been brought forward. The town's enthusiastic about that housing. We're enthusiastic about working with those owners. And it's not to say that we're not enthusiastic about working with a billboard because I am, absolutely am. And I have said that. And I have a record to stand behind on that. But that's the rub for me. So, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to be brief because I don't want to repeat the same things. The only few pieces I'll add is I'm almost always in favor of new revenue streams. But as was mentioned, where this is kind of a loophole where I believe they're already advertising these apartments. So, it's not that it's going to happen. They're going to do the conversion, but I believe they're already advertising apartments at that location.
Okay. I'm not aware of that.
And that was a quick Google search, pulled that up. So, I think that's, if it were a maybe down the road somewhere, this might maybe happen, there would be more of a discussion. But the fact that, I believe, part of their justification was lackluster business at that site, which is why they wanted to convert it. So, we can't then, or I personally can't be in favor of putting something there when the intent is resident, not being within 1,000 feet of residential use and put that right in the backyard because we have to look out for those residents that will be living there. in the backyard because we have to look out for those residents that will be living there and will be dealing with the calls of, "Why can't I see this light coming in my side window? Why is there this bright glowing sign in my backyard?" type thing. So unfortunately, I think there's, this probably isn't going to sit well with me, but if there are, if we can get clarification on if they are going to follow through with that permit or if they are actually leasing those units or have leases advertised for those units, there may be a follow-on discussion, but at this moment, I don't think I have too much more to add. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Krabman.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm looking at this. I understand that it could become residential. I wasn't aware that they possibly are already publicizing this. I mean, I know we've had multiple lots that are going to, that have been for sale, and they're going to convert, and just we wait and hold on it, and then it turns out that they need, right now, with the way the state's going, they're using every room possible to put residents in, and the space that there's consistent that they have now, the state would love to fill those places up right now. And my take on it also is that right next to the building is commercial overhead signs. There's like, all the hotel signs are right there that are almost the same thing as a billboard, and they're within the 1,000 feet. But we're not going to make the, hotels take their signs down. We're not going to make the, the, what's the restaurant that's next to it that has a very large, was it Cracker Barrel, has a, right in their entrance, they have an enormous bright sign that's right there as well. That's a commercial use, and when that happens, it just, we don't, it, right now, it's a commercial space, and there's a revenue to be taken. When people rent, it's, my take is if something could be hit, it's almost like buying something. You buy a house next to the airport, don't complain that the planes are there. Right now, this is what's, it's a commercial space right now. It hasn't turned into a residential, and this is significant revenue that the town can greatly use, but I'll listen to the rest of the board's opinion on that. I'm not one to turn away revenue when it just, there's multiple signs of the same dimension right in the same area. They don't happen to be a billboard, but they are a sign with very bright lights, and that's, we're not going to make them take those down.
And I would say that, I believe that said, there's 11 buildings there, and the spillover from this billboard is minimal, if any. It's, I mean, it's directed on the International Place right to the highway. Those residents, if they're there, wouldn't even notice it. It wouldn't be in their windows or anything like that, so that's to consider.
Now, by Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
This is going to be 100 feet tall, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and it's going to be double-sided?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I've driven by these. I'm not going to say that it wouldn't be visible from the building based on the location shown on the plot plan, but I think that's, it's a tough claim, right?
Well, we've had studies done. They've had studies done with spillover in other neighborhoods, and they really, it diminishes dramatically when it goes on the offsides. It's focused on the highway and to the sides, it really does diminish dramatically. It's no, it's like the lights at the football field and stuff like that. They really don't go off into the, into the housing areas, but.
This is a digital sign, so it's focused directly at 495, and we've had lighting studies done, and none of it would spill downward. It's outward, so the residents there would not see it at all.
So where is the backside focused? Because it's dual-sided, right?
So if this is 495 right here, the backside's like this, so the backside is open, so it's only facing toward 495. Nobody in the back gets any light.
So it's a tri, a?
It's like a V.
V, okay.
So it's facing out toward 495, no light. It doesn't drop straight down, and it doesn't drop backward, so the residents would not see this at all, and it's up high enough that there'd be no effect at all.
All right. That is, I may have misread the plot plan then. Thank you for that clarification.
Mr. Chair, through you, again, to Mr. Sadwick, or he may, he may know this answer. Again, I agree. I was a proponent of the billboards. I think it's a great revenue source for the town, and I'm always looking for, I'm just concerned, it sits currently a commercial, it sits commercially, you know. I understand, you know, what my fellow board members stating that, you know, legally, I mean, I think this may be something we want to ask Town Council, with the initial approval of them coming to us, does that put anything on the parcel, on the current parcel, that gives us any conflict of creating that nonconformity? Or are we permitting it today? The current parcel sits commercial. We approve this sign today, it's commercial. Similar as we talked about Cracker Barrel, it's probably another 650 feet away to the entrance to that. You know, there in front of us today, the parcel exists today as a hotel that's a commercial establishment. If we permit this today, it's, we're meeting the guideline. We meet all of the guidelines, even though we know.
Well, yeah, but not the spirit of intention. We understand what's supposed to happen.
Right. But, I mean, I'd like to, you know, I wish we knew more. Is this going to move forward? You know, I mean, has there been, maybe we could reach out to the owner of the parcel to say, you know, "We have this." I mean, you're aware.
Mr. Ryder, yeah, they signed a lease with us to do this, so they're fully aware of it. I think if they felt it was a negative to their operation, they wouldn't have done that, but they signed an extensive lease with the petitioner to do it.
I don't know if they know the bylaw, though. That's my only concern, that if they, if the owner knows the bylaw that you can't have a sign within a residential zone, and by them converting their, to, the apartments to residence, to apartments, that would create residential. So, again, I'm sure they committed it to the lease, and I think that they're, sure, it's revenue for them, but as it sits, they've already been in front of the town to say, "We want to convert this. We want to turn this into housing. We were using that towards our 10%, but yet we're sitting here facing that we're going to create our own nonconformity if this is approved."
The property owner is aware.
They are aware, they are aware of the bylaw?
Yes, because currently, you can't have a billboard within 1,000 feet of residential, but you, it doesn't say anything about residential being within any distance of a billboard. So today, it meets all the criteria.
Right.
I got you.
Yeah, so we're skirting the intent at that point. I fully understand, and I agree, and the logic is sound, but that tells me that we are trying to skirt the intent of the bylaw.
So the property owner asked that question. That was the answer I gave him, was that today, it currently meets all the criteria of the town and of the state because we have to get a state permit as well. So that was my answer to him. Today, yes, it meets all the, it's conforming, but if, in fact, he does create residential, then it becomes a legal nonconforming. It can stay there, but it can never change. The state will not allow it to change. You guys won't allow it to change. If anything ever happened, we couldn't change the size, the height, anything like that. So it'd be a legal nonconforming if, in fact, they do create residential there.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay, my question's going to be, and I agree with Ms. Wellman and Mr. Mackey in regards to it being turned into a residence, and I think that would affect the residence with a sign being there, but is the Marriott, as they turn this into residential, are they going to want to change it to residential tax rate and not commercial tax rate?
Yeah, I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, it's a residential tax rate.
It's going to be a residential tax rate even though their sign is on that property?
If you're talking about the tax on the housing, it'll be residential. Theirs will be commercial.
So currently, right now, it's commercial?
The current operation of the hotel.
Right.
When they convert, it'll be residential use, taxed residential.
Okay, so my feeling is, is that we should continue this meeting until we got clarification whether the Marriott is going to do this residential or not. You know, I don't know how the rest of the board feels on that, because I'm skeptical of having a sign and a resident because as soon as the residents start renting and the sign's there, then we're just going, I think Ms. Wellman's right, we're skirting, we're breaking our own rules. So what is the intent? What would the board like to do?
I think a continuance is interesting, and perhaps, Mr. Chairman, the manager or the assistant town manager can reach out to the owners. It seems that the owners are fine with it. They don't, they don't see an issue at all.
Right.
But it seems like enough members of this board do, and we aren't really necessarily interested in breaking our own rules, so kind of what's the plan going forward? If they've made a different change of heart or whatever, we would want to know that, too, because we need to make our own plans on our 40B, you know, requirements and affordable housing and so forth, so. Not an end to the conversation, but certainly a continuing conversation.
General continuance or a specific date or?
Mr. Montori.
We'll have information for the next meeting.
For the next meeting? Okay, so we continue the next meeting, and believe me, I don't want to give up the revenue either.
No.
I understand. We're all like revenue.
But we also have to deal with residents, you know, so there's revenue, residents, there's a fine line to carry there.
We understand.
So if, Mr. Montori.
I know you do, yes.
Mr. Montori, if you could find that information out for us next meeting, we'll put them on the agenda again, and I'll take a motion to continue.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Mackey, second by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor sitting by saying aye.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye as well. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Questions, Mr. Ryder? Thank you. Well done. I appreciate, yeah, I appreciated the way you got to where I wanted, where I thought it was going to go. Oh, yeah.
Okay, to Three Amigos Bar and Grill, 1777 Main Street Outdoor Dining Permit.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is David Castro. I'm a manager for Three Amigos Bar and Grill, and we are here today for a petition of outdoor seating.
Hi, so my name is Francesco. So we are here today for, if we can get a permit to outside services. So we already sent the plans and everything with the required for. If there's any questions, we are here to make the answers.
Board members, has everybody had a chance to review the application? So we'll start with Mr. Mackey, I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no questions. All the answers were here. I think there was, actually, I do have one. Confirmation that your tables are not going to be in front of the door. I think that was the open question from the fire chief to make sure we're not blocking the exit.
No, there were not tables in front of the door.
All right. Otherwise, it looks like everything else has been addressed. So I, that's all I have. Hopefully, we can get you guys where you need to go, and hopefully business is going well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Krabman.
Yeah, I wholeheartedly support this. I know a lot of residents, we don't have a lot of locations with outdoor seating, and a lot of people have been asking for it. This is a new restaurant. We want to support our new businesses, and by finding a way for them to provide outdoor seating for people that want to enjoy the nice weather, I think this is a, this is a safe location. It's, you know, it's put in a good area. They have plenty of open space there, and I think this will be a benefit to the community, so I wholeheartedly support it.
Wellman.
Thank you for your application. It's complete. You have all the, everything that we were looking for. I appreciate all the questions and the feedback from our departments. I think, I fully support this. I note that this is for dining only, and we have outdoor dining in other restaurants in that area, but there's not alcohol service. This will be table service outside with alcohol consumption outside. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And that's what's different about this versus some of our other businesses that haven't come before us to, for folks to take their food and sit outside and eat at a table, just for the clarification of folks at home. You are not planning to have music outside. This is not an entertainment license, but I wanted to ask that question.
No, we just have a small speaker outside, but it's not, it's not allowed, but it's been always there.
It's always been there.
Yeah.
It's there now.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. I support your application.
Thank you.
Mr. Ryder. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think this is great. I love the outdoor dining aspect of this. I know the chief mentioned some blocks or some bollards along the face, so prevent any cars coming up on where those tables are. And then, anything that is dedicating that area where your tables, whether it be roped off or chained off so people don't walk off, is it cordoned off by any, you know, you have your tables across the front? Are there any chains or?
Yeah, we were thinking about doing some kind of like fence with some plants, some decoration, some gardening.
Okay.
And I don't know, that will be, you know, something.
Okay, I know the chief mentions, and that's, you know, in my day job, I permit these all the time, and that's one of the big things we require. We've used large stone planters, and that acts as a barricade as well as you can put flowers in them, a little decorative, so I think that's great. No other issues.
Okay, I only have one question, and that is, what hours do you plan on serving outside? Is it all the way till 1 o'clock?
No. We've been thinking about, say, the last table around 9:30, 10 o'clock, that's something.
Just for the door service.
Okay. The reason I ask the question is, I don't want an outdoor barroom at night. I understand the outdoor dining aspect of it, but I don't like the idea of having somebody hang around there till 12:30 at night.
No, no, we work with you, and whatever is the time you tell us to seat people over there, we'll tell them that if it's 10 o'clock or 11 o'clock, they always go inside. We have outdoor seating in Molding, and the city of Molding let us have people at 11 o'clock, so if anybody gets there at 10:30, we tell them that by 11 o'clock, they need to go inside the restaurant because it's not allowed to have people outside after 11. So I don't know, that will be the case over here, or it could be earlier, I don't know.
Okay, I don't know if we have the, we're the license that way or?
You should.
Yeah.
Put the times on it.
That's a great question.
What is the hours that you were planning to have it, no longer have people outside?
Where? No, no, right now, we're planning to have people there until 10 o'clock.
10 o'clock?
Yeah.
That's reasonable.
10 o'clock it is?
Yes.
I just don't want it there till 1 o'clock.
Yep.
Yeah, after 10 o'clock.
Some people would need to go inside by 10 p.m.
Yeah, by 10 p.m. We tell people that by 10, that you'll be inside the restaurant, so.
Have a 9 o'clock seating.
All right.
If you can adjust that license, Mr. Montori. Do you have another question, Mr.?
No, not the, I'm just going to make a motion if you.
Okay.
With that said, I'd make a motion to approve the outdoor dining permit with stipulation that it's, the seating is not to exceed 10 p.m. Second.
Okay, we had a motion by Mr. Krabman, second by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor sitting by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. That's unanimous, five to zero. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you so much.
When's the patio going to open?
Thank you so much.
I'm sorry?
When will the patio open?
So if we, so when we get this permit, so we plan to do this this weekend if we can.
See you on Saturday.
See you later.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, next up is residents. Is there any residents that would like to speak?
Apparently not.
Okay, we'll just move right on to new business. Town Manager Search Committee. Mr. Town Manager.
So, Mr. Chairman, you have a list of candidates that have applied for the Town Manager Search Committee. Just want to get an idea of how you want to move forward with that process.
Board members, how do you want to proceed?
Expeditiously.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if you would, I think we did a good job of putting out for applicants, but one of the things that I thought was a little bit difficult when we posted this was that we didn't put the, we have it in our bylaws that people cannot serve on committees and be a member of this, and I don't think we make that very clear to the public. So we have a list of applicants, but a number of them So we have a list of applicants, but a number of them are ineligible because of that. Then there's also part of the things is ethics. If somebody is related to somebody, if somebody is, you know, you know, you know, you know. I want to make sure that when we do this, we do it the right way. I, I, I want to move this quickly as well. I agree that we need to move this quickly. But with that said, I, I think that we're limiting ourselves to the number of applications because of all the people that have stepped off or, like, we had interviews tonight and we may have lost another applicant, it seems like. And so the number of applicants that we have to select are limited. I'm, I'm happy with some of them, but I, I wouldn't mind to just put something in there, maybe just to the end of this week or something, saying that, you know, clarify the stance on the people that are on this must be, must not be on a committee, must not be relative of somebody, must not that. I think that should have been clarified when we posted this. And I don't know if residents were aware of that, thinking that, you know, I probably don't have a chance of getting on this because all these other people are gonna be on it. And we have a lot of people that are the usual applicants on these type of things excluded because they're, they can't be on this. I see a lot of good people that are on here, but a lot of good people can't be on this committee. That's my point on it. I just, I wish we had done that ahead of time. I think we, I think if we had posted that out saying that, you know, we'll get all the applicants, the people that applied that weren't aware that they couldn't be on this committee. And I think that we should have actually put that out when we posted it. And I think there should be some clarification on it. That's just my point on it. Now listen to the rest of the board.
Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we've officially closed, I believe, the 16th, or was not officially because I don't even think we actually need to post for this. So I think that was just what we chose to do. Where we have a difficult decision coming up with Mr. Montori leaving, and I think we need to be moving expeditiously. If there are people on other committees, just like our previous discussion with the sign, things were written a certain way for a certain reason, I don't think we should be extending the timeline for somebody to drop off another committee and then jump over here. Bylaws were written away for a reason. I think we should be moving forward as quickly as possible. Yes, there are three people on this list of, I think, 17 or 14 names who are ineligible and lesson learned. We can communicate more clearly in the future. But question through you to the town manager, did we not include the requirements on the posting?
I'd have to go back to the exact posting, but my guess is no.
Okay.
We just asked for Town Manager Search Committee and, and as applicants came in, we would adjust based on that.
Well, then I'm ecstatic that we only had three and that we have so many other valid and well-qualified candidates before us.
Ms. Wellman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that we have a, we have enough candidates on here that we could double, there, I know many of these, these candidates who remain on this list and they, we could, you know, more than have a fantastic committee to move forward. What I'm, would like to interject in the conversation, I want to interview the applicants. I think we should have them in for interviews as we just did tonight. You know, I, I think that may help. I, I, we, we took a hiatus from that last year interviewing candidates because we had the cannabis work that we were doing, which was a heavy lift. And while I don't regret that, I think we made great appointments last year as well. And I'm satisfied with, with most of those appointments. I, I do think that there's a public good to interviewing the, the folks as we did tonight. And they don't have to be long interviews, but we have a great group here and I would love to bring them in in short order and get that, get that moving. I don't know if, if it's too early to see if we can get people in for like Monday night because then it's, you know, the fourth. Don't, don't, don't say no right away.
Be him with Christmas.
No, but I think, you know, the search process is really, really important and we each get one appointee. And, you know, I think that, I think we'll actually, this board will find consensus through looking at the candidates before us. I'm not really concerned about, about the folks who have dropped off. They are great and they serve our committee, our community tremendously. But there's room here for other voices and these are, there's a fantastic list of people here, so with great experience in town. So I have no concerns about that. But I do think we should bring people in as soon as possible and get the ball rolling.
Mr. A.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I, I do agree that I would like to interview, however, you know, as we all stated, this is a critical, critical appointment, appointments to help us in search of the next town manager. So I think it's worthwhile extending it for a period. It can't hurt. A week's not gonna put us that far behind. So I think, you know, I'll indulge Mr. Krabman and again, if we put, if we just can put some clarification on that, Mr. Manager. And see what, for another week or so. But I'll see what the rest of the board feels.
I have a question. Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Krabman, Mr. Ryder. If they haven't applied already, what do you think has stopped them from applying if they weren't already aware of the issue?
I honestly didn't see, I mean, me personally, I've asked people, I've put it out there and they said they had difficulty finding it. Said, uh, well, where was it? I said, you do have to do a little bit of research, searching for it if it's something you're interested. But again, I think.
I mean, this is a pretty long list of people who've managed to find it.
It is, but again, I think it's worthwhile. I think it's an opportunity to see what we have. I don't think a couple days, a couple, three days is really gonna set us far, that far behind. But again, I'll see what the rest of the board has to say. Thank you.
I don't have a problem extending it, but I do want to schedule the interviews for Monday, the 8th.
Monday, the 8th, okay.
So we have that going and even if we had to take the applicants up till, at Friday. And Monday, the 8th, we'll figure, or Friday, we can figure out how many we have and then just schedule everything for Monday, the 8th. I mean.
Not available Monday, the 8th.
Tuesday, the 9th.
Tuesday, the 9th, I'm available.
So.
Mr. Chairman, to, to Ms. Wellman's point, I'm, I'm not trying to delay this in any way or form, I believe it. The reason I'm thinking is that we have a lot of committees and it seems like a lot of times when people apply for committees, it's the people that are, it's the same, we get a lot of.
The rule of 80/20.
Yeah. And a lot of people, I'm looking, I'm really encouraged by this list that there are so many new names on there. And just making it aware and having this conversation that people that are on other committees are, can't be on this, that gives them the ability to not feel like, you know, I don't have all the skills and I'm gonna be competing against somebody that's on this committee, this committee, this committee and, and has all the institutional knowledge. Where we're gonna get somebody that, like, I, I don't know who's out there and it's just, this is, I think, the most important decision that we're gonna be making as a board to make sure who's leading us. And I just want to make sure that, like I said, we didn't put it out there. I think we should have. I'm not trying to, that, that we, that somebody that's, you can't be on this if you're related to somebody. It's in our bylaws, but it wasn't posted with the application. And when I went to go look for it myself, I couldn't find it. So I went on the webpage, I looked on the social media, I looked on the things, and I asked the town manager. It's like, where is it? And he had to go through and try to find it. And we're not sure when it was posted, if it came down, but I looked through our social media part of it. I didn't see anything on our social media that said, and granted, we get a lot of applicants and I think it's from word of mouth going around, but it's just, like I said, I, I would like to see, you know, I, I, I want to make sure it's open and fair. I'd like to see some people come in that have never served on a committee before, that we don't know the skills that are in our community and somebody comes forward that may, I, I'm willing to wait a couple more days to see if there's anybody else there that may be willing to step forward. If no one does, we're, we're not gonna lose that much time by doing so.
I, I just would, this is a temporary committee and I would hate to see people be encouraged to step off another committee that they're serving on so that they might be available for this work.
I don't think they can.
Do you know what I mean?
I, I don't, that's not the purpose of that. I don't think the bylaw, I don't think allows you to step off another committee and to go on this.
Okay.
If I'm, if I'm correct. I think if you're serving on one right now, you can't, you can't just drop off and then go on this. That's why I'm saying that the residents may have thought that, you know, a lot of times you see our committees, you see, like, if you look at the list, it's like people are on three or four committees. And you see very few people that are on one. So it's just to see that, I think would be helpful.
I appreciate the clarification. Thank you. Yep, okay.
Just, just to ask the question, so if it does come up, because I've read that section of the bylaw multiple times. Through you, the town manager, could we get clarification from town council to ensure? Because again, it could be read one of two ways, that if you're on a committee, you cannot be on it. I want to make sure to the discussion that just happened that people aren't dropping and then trying to apply. So it, they should be precluded, but.
Yeah, the way the charter's written, you, you, you probably could resign, but, but what would happen is the committee, the way the charter's written stays in place for at least, you know, a year. So you're not gonna finish work here and then try to get back on the other committee. I think that's, it's just convoluted to do that. I know people asked about that and then decide, no, they're not gonna do it.
Yeah, we don't, we're not looking for that. And, and we need their voices and their experience and their institutional knowledge on the committees that they're on.
But I'll, I'll double check the, the charter just to make sure it's, and I could talk to town council. He did weigh in on the question at one point. He said, you can't take a leave of absence. You'd have to fully resign and get off the committee to want to be on the committee. But we'll double check it. We can put the entire section of the charter in the advertisement. The only I would ask is instead of going to the Friday before the 8th, you go to, you know, next Tuesday? Because we're gonna need time to get people in for interviews and I don't want to be scrambling on Friday afternoon for a Monday interview.
I like that.
So if you can close it, you know, next Friday, next Tuesday, I'd say, you know, noon, then that gives Paula a chance to call everyone, set up interviews. It is July 4th next week.
Get people going.
That's fine.
And we can get it up tomorrow.
The one addition, I would say, are we then planning to appoint people when we sit down on the 8th? Is that the intent?
The, the night.
Well, I don't think we're gonna be.
We won't get them all at once. It's gonna be two nights.
It's gonna be a couple nights.
Okay, because it's, I think, looking at the proposals that we're gonna talk about next, it was like 12 to 16 weeks to go through that process.
Yeah.
So weeks do start mattering, especially as we approach planning for next fiscal year and October town meeting and all these other things that are gonna rapidly approach for us. We're gonna have a lot on our plate coming up soon. So that's why, I, I know we've all mentioned that doing this expeditiously is important, but days do start to matter when you're looking at 12 to 16 week cycles to run through the process.
No, we can move quickly.
So if we get more applicants, and we'll know that by Tuesday, maybe we can schedule for the 9th and the 10th. Just split it 50/50.
Do a five to, we could do five or six, you know, make that exception to, to, to get that done. And, and Paula can start calling the folks on this list right now. Get them going. Yeah, I like that. I like that. And I think that for folks that are on committees in the search process that we're gonna talk about in a minute, all of the folks that are involved in, in finance committee, in historical commission, you know, any of the, any of the committees we have in town, they can participate through the search process, through the community outreach portion of that. So there's gonna, they're, they'll have a voice, all of our experienced resident volunteers, night government will have an opportunity to contribute to the search, even if they aren't directly on the committee. So it's a really good. All right, so in the form of a motion, I'll make a motion to extend the application period to Tuesday, July 2nd at noon with a requirement that town staff will repost the application with the charter information and that we will begin scheduling interviews on Tuesday, July 9 and Wednesday, July 10.
We have a motion. We have a motion by Ms. Wellman, second by Mr. Ryder. All those in favor sitting by saying aye.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye as well. That's unanimous.
Tom, do you want to start the meetings?
One opposed. So that's four to one.
Tom, do you want to start the meetings on the 9th and 10th?
I'm gonna save as early as possible. 5:00 is fine.
5:00?
I'll, I'll make it work.
I can make it work, yeah.
I'll make it work.
I can make it work.
Okay.
It's gonna be the heaviest.
Next up, Town Manager Search Firm Award Contract.
So, Mr. Chairman, we had sent out requests for quotes to five firms. Four of them responded. One of them responded late to the date they were required to send back quotes and their proposal didn't meet the criteria. It was for an hourly rate. The other three that did comply, one did not return, and then the other three that complied, one was MGT. Their proposal was $25,000 to conduct the search. Community Paradigm Associates, their price was $14,000 and Richard White, Gruen White, provided a proposal in the amount of $9,990. The proposals were thorough proposals. I just don't know how the board wants to move from here. The, you know, it's, it's through, it's the low price, normally get the bid unless the board saw something in the proposals for us to go back and look at and discuss with the firms. But it's up to the board how you want to move forward. Before I finalize this.
Okay, board members, any comments? We'll start with Mr. Ryder.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think there was, you know, my opinion, I believe there was one, one leader. I mean, I've worked with, have worked and familiar with one of the firms, not being the lowest price, but I, the way they were, I think they were a little different in their proposal. So looking at their placement of town administrators and town managers, they seem to be the clear leader. Not to say that the other firms are not, but again, I don't think we should be worrying about price to find the best next town manager. I really don't think, you know, $4,000 is really gonna set us back in the search for the next town manager. So my opinion, I will listen to what the rest of the board has to say, but I did, through you, I asked Mr. Manager to find out from a procurement standpoint, are we tied to that or, because they're not quite exact in their proposals, so.
What was the rule for award?
It's, it's price. So we'd have, I'd have, if the board wants to go with someone other than the low bidder, I would talk to the bidders tomorrow.
Okay. Are you, do you want your comments?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So I have worked with both of these firms personally recently. So I'm, I'm well familiar with, with both Rick White and Bernie Lynch. Bernie Lynch is often considered, Community Paradigm is, you know, is often considered the bigger firm. Rick has a more, I would say, tailored personal process. One of the things that he does is he calls all of the finalists' references first and then he calls people they've worked with that aren't on their list. And then he prepares a statement for the board that is a full reference review of all of the finalists that you get. And it tells you what people are saying about the candidates, good and bad. And it's, it's not everybody that you know that you worked with. So I, I was recruited by Rick White for two finalist jobs that I did in Wellfleet and in Orleans. He does a great job of recruiting women candidates. In Orleans, they have four women candidates. He also recruited in Falmouth and had no women candidates, so sometimes you get that. So he, he, Mr. Lynch does not do that. Reference check in the beginning, that is done afterward. I've worked with Mr. Lynch on two searches in Reading recently, one in 2021, and then we had to do another one recently. And so, you know, he does, he does an excellent job. His firm is, is exceptional. They do good work. They did also Wilmington. I think that, you know, Rick brings a great team. He gives it a lot of personal attention. Bernie also brings in like John Petron. He's fantastic, you know, from Burlington. He was town manager in Burlington with a lot of their growth. So we can't go wrong with any of these candidates, in my opinion. So we can't go wrong with any of these candidates, in my opinion. I think that the reference process is materially different, depending on what this board is interested in. I think it's going to take about the same amount of time. They're going to go through it, how far, how in-depth do we want to go with like a community profile? Do we want to do community meetings to bring people in and get their sense of what they're looking for? Mr. Montori has done an exceptional job. And the culture in town hall reflects his management style. And we haven't done a deep dive in a long time. And when we went through a town manager search before, this community was in relative upheaval. So it was like a three-member select board, and there were financial crisis was happening and so forth. So we haven't, as a community, had that opportunity. Both firms will allow us to do that work if we want to do that work. There's optional things in there, Community Paradigm put in. Rick White does the same thing. So I don't think we can go wrong with either one. If money matters and the rule for award to procurement process was the low bidder, we can, we can save some money and go with Mr. White, with Gruen White. So that's not terribly substantive, but just to give you a little insight into what that process has looked like. But yeah, Bernie was the low bidder in Reading on that. He beat out Mr. White's firm, so, in the last one. So, yeah. Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we're all talking about the same two proposals.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, okay. Not having municipal government day job experience. The Paradigm one was the one that jumped out more to me as being kind of more comprehensive, more better laid out in a more readable and absorbable fashion. There was a lot more detail to it. Not having, again, that level of experience that some of our members have. I would like to find a way to make that one work. Again, there are procurement law issues. But I think, as Mr. Ryder said, that there's, we can probably find a way around that. Or as you mentioned, Mr. Montori, that there are discussions that can be had with the bidders as to how to move forward.
Yeah, I know the principals in all the firms, so I can call them.
Clarification.
Clarification.
We're not ducking the law.
Absolutely not. It's clarification.
There you go.
We wouldn't be talking about it in open meeting if there was something wrong, right? That's, that would just be, that's how you go to jail. So, anyway, yes, clarification. See, I don't do the municipal day job thing. I'm not as sensitive to that. So, yeah, if there is a solution to be had there, that would be my recommendation. But again, I think it's a good sign that so far, the three of us at least that have spoke have come to, down to the same two proposals. So that's where I think I got, thank you.
Mr. Krabman.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Mackey and Mr. Ryder. I looked at their proposals. I also looked at, I've had the ability to work dealing with, you know, number of city and towns, and dealing with city managers, town managers, and over 30 years. Having somebody that has the expertise, that has the knowledge, and has a firm, that has those players that are on there, that will bring in the best candidates, ask the questions. And I looked at what the firms did and who they, how the cities and towns around us. We said, you know, Lynch brought in the, you know, Reading. They brought in Wilmington. Both of them ended up with excellent candidates.
I agree.
So that's what I'm looking for. If it's going to cost me $4,000 more to get somebody, that's going to be, that's, $4,000 well spent, as far as I'm concerned. But it's, it's just, it came down to, I read through the whole package. I'd looked at the proposals. They're very similar, but I just feel that they're going to go above and beyond to bring in the candidates. They have the expertise, they have the knowledge, they have the, they're going to go out and find people that may be on the tier of, you know, maybe they're working for a city or town right now, and maybe they're looking to, for a change. Or maybe it's somebody that recently retired and may be looking for, may come back. But I'm looking for somebody who's going to want to hit the floor running, and I'm hoping that we get that. You know, it's, we got a couple of tough decisions, because not only do we have a town manager, we may be looking for an assistant very shortly as well, when we have somebody retiring as well. So it's like, we're going to have some challenges going forward. And I just want to make sure that when we bring somebody in, that they're going to be able to, they're going to have tough shoes to follow. And that's going to be hard to bring somebody in. And I just want to make sure we have the best firm to go and find that person for us. And my take on it is that I just think that, you know, their firm was just a little bit better. I'm fine with listening to the board, but that's my perspective.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Krabman. I actually agree. And the $4,000, the $4,000, you know, you don't want to hire an electrician to do your plumbing work. You want to get the best candidate we can possibly get. So with everybody, what's that?
No.
With that being said, Mr. Montori, you're going to look into see how.
I'll take it from there.
Okay.
Yep, I'll take it from there and I'll look at the contract once I finalize it.
Okay. I just got one other question. So why don't you reach out to these firms?
Uh huh.
How quickly will you think we're going to get an answer? Because I know we do want to.
I hope to have, I hope to have a contract wrapped up with Paradigm by the end of the week.
Okay.
Yeah, I think.
I'll call them both. I'll call, I'll call Rick White personally and talk to him.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, and that's important with other communities in the Merrimack Valley that currently Drake it is in the process. Potentially another in the Merrimack Valley.
Yeah, no, we're far superior to Drake.
Yeah, I don't disagree. I don't disagree we're far superior. But they're going to be looking for the best firm to fit their shoes as well, for their role, so.
Well, the other thing too is, I think Tewksbury is an attractive job.
That's right.
The job that Mr. Montori did.
We just want to lock in the best firm that's going to fit for Tewksbury right now.
Okay. One final question, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the town manager. Are we at risk of having to start this later, even if we get a contract signed? Because somebody else starts before us?
No, I mean, it's, it's, no, we'll be okay. I mean, we'll, you still get the search committee together, so there is time. So even if I have to adjust some things, I'll figure it out.
I have a question on the contract. When it comes to the contract with Community Paradigm, can you require, or did he put any limitations on in-person attendance at meetings?
If you, I mean, I can look at that. That's, I think.
I would prefer to have him attend meetings, not remote meeting, or remote.
Oh, physically attend?
Correct, yeah. There's a lot of remote attendance that goes on. I would prefer to see that defined, at least in in-person meetings, when he'll be able to come to the board or to serve in the community versus, you know, remote attendance.
Yeah, my guess is, because both Mr. Lynch and Petron share in the work, you'd get one of them.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, I can talk to them.
Yeah, either one.
I'll talk to them both tomorrow.
They're both great.
Okay. And like I just stated, since your leadership, your management makes, I think makes Tewksbury an attractive position. I mean, if it was a town manager out there that said, do I go to Tewksbury? Or do I go to Drake? It's going to be an easy decision, so.
All due respect to Drake it, our neighbors in Drake it, who were fantastic.
I was using it as, again, there are other communities in the search process. I think it's in our best interest to get a firm up the contract.
Get moving, yeah.
Correct.
Okay, we have one last thing. We're back to minutes.
Yes, sir.
No, we're not. No, no, no.
No, thanks.
Mrs. Young.
Mrs. Young has been waiting.
You made her go last.
Jeez. Okay, we have the donation from the Congregational Church Terrier Grant Program to Open Space.
Yes.
I wish we moved her up in the calendar.
Do you think? You almost got in earlier.
Almost.
Than that, just before 7:00 PM option. Thank you for staying.
That's, it's important. So Susan Young, 1408 Wupu Road. And I'm here representing Open Space. And the grant that we, that we received from the Congregational Church Terriola Mission Grant, we had applied for some money. And they graciously awarded us $500, which has been submitted to the finance person. And what we plan to do with that money is to purchase shrubs that are going to be placed at two of the trails in town to help to give the sites a little bit more interest to the folks who are using the trails. But also hopefully to educate people about the types of native shrubs that are, that can be used in their own home environment, as well as shrubs that are pollinators. I don't know if you want details about what we're planning to do. But we, with those funds, we are going to be, there are nine shrubs that will be going in. And then we will also use some of that money for soil amendments and probably watering bags for this time of year.
I love that you're putting in a pollinator garden. That is fantastic. This is wonderful, what a great grant and a wonderful program and a perfect plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I only have one question. I think you answered it. The type of plants that you're going to put out there, they're native plants that will take a little maintenance?
Correct.
I'd hate you to go and put something out there. I mean, I know your expertise, obviously. You know what to put out there and those type of things. But just want to make sure that you put something out and it, you know, all of a sudden it just, you know, start things. So if you're going to put watering bags, you're going to put something to make sure the care and maintenance of it survives wherever you're planting it.
Correct. And after the first year or so, they should be pretty well established and able to maintain themselves. We had put in some pollinator plants previously that required more maintenance and people were able to give them. So putting in shrubs is going to be something that kind of decreases that burden on, on the staff of Open Space. And, but they'll need some, they'll need some TLC for a little period of time.
Luckily, we have your expertise in doing this. I feel confident with it. I've been involved with people doing like adopt the highways where they want to, you know, they put something around a rotary or something like that, and they put something out there and they're not native to the things, and the salt will kill them, and this or that. And they, the intention is great, they just don't survive. And then they're carpal. So with your knowledge, you're going to plant something out there that's going to be nice. It'll blossom and be something that'll add to the trails instead of having something that you're going to put out there that won't survive. So I, I thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else?
Mackey, anything?
I've got nothing but a motion.
Okay. I just want to thank you for this donation. As being a former conservation committee member, this is just what the town needs. They need help from anywhere they can get it. Because they, they don't have, like, they have a fund, but they can't use the fund for only certain things, you know. Mr. Montori, can we send a thank you to the Congregational Church and the board of selectmen?
Yes.
And again, thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you for waiting this whole meeting. I'm sure you learned a lot. I would have moved you out. Thank you.
That's not a problem, and.
Motion to approve. A motion to accept with gratitude the donation.
And we had a motion made by Mr. Mackey, second by Mr. Ryder. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And chair votes aye as well. That's five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, what are we on to now?
No, we have minutes. My apology, we do have minutes. No, my apology. I was talking about minutes prior to coming down. So, Mr. Chair, make a motion to accept the minutes from April 23rd, 2024.
Second.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion made by Mr. Ryder, second by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well.
Motion to adjourn.
And a motion made by.
Mr. Chair, before you, I had one last thing for committee reports. I forgot.
And I have one thing to go after.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to make, the public is asking a lot of questions about the Fourth of July. And I just wanted to bring it to the attention. So the fireworks are going to be on July 2nd this year. It's not by choice. It is the, we've had a company that's done the fireworks for us for over five years. And unfortunately, that firework company just ghosted us. They disappeared. I have no idea why. I have no idea what happened. But we sat with the committee and we didn't know what to do, because we got, I had spoken to them in January, February. Everything was all set. We talked to them at the end of the year. We asked, we want to do it the same day? Yep, not a problem. We're going to continue. We're going to continue. Everything was fine. And then all of a sudden, they just stopped answering emails and phone calls. I have no idea if they're in business or not, but they won't return calls. They won't do anything. So we scrambled. There is no firework company available anywhere that I can find that will do it on July 3rd or 4th. Or the weekend before, or the weekend after. It's, you just can't find them anymore. We're going to, we were able to fall into the second because another city or town canceled and changed theirs. And so we grabbed that date. So when residents are asking why we did, that's the reason. And we're going to have all the events on the second, because we have a couple of volunteers that are able to do that date. I know it's not the ideal time and date. And I wish the Fourth of July fell on a Saturday every single year. It just doesn't. So we're going to have the events for the kids on that day with the help of volunteers that have taken the day off to do so. Same thing with the fireworks at night. The town has offered assistance, because we have employees that'll be working that day. Now maybe we can get some assistance from, we reached out to a couple of community groups, the Lions, the Elks, the Knights, to help to see if they can get us some assistance. The police department is going to help with their community group. And we have some, maybe some resident, members of the town that will actually come down and help as well. So just wanted to let the public know, when they're asking that question, what happened? It wasn't by choice. It was by necessity. And we're doing the best we can. And unfortunately, it's, we're going to have it on the second. And we'll try to do better next year. But I don't know. We're at the mercy of the firework companies, unfortunately.
Mr. Krabman. Thank you for this work and your stewardship of the Fourth of July activities. We've done this for a long time. Do you think it makes any sense for a future year to move to like a town day kind of celebration where it's designated as a Saturday, but it's not immediately surrounding the Fourth of July so that all the same activities and events can occur, but they happen, you know, in June, or they happen later in July? A lot of communities around us do town day type events, and it's all the same stuff. It's just, you schedule it, you always have it on a Sunday or a Saturday. You have the fireworks when you want. I mean, you have to say yes or no. It just, it might be fun to think about.
I'll bring it back to the committee. But they, we have a committee that meets and they discuss it. And pretty much the same, we've had conversations with people saying, you know, why do we have a Memorial Day parade? Maybe we should do it on Veterans Day. Maybe we should do this. Maybe, for one thing, the memorial, like the Memorial Day parade's been happening for 100 years, long before I was born. And it's something that was tradition. The Fourth of July, there's been conversation about other cities and towns have fireworks. And maybe we move it to the Harvest Fest, or maybe we do that. And we've reached out to groups and they're all like, we, I think residents want fireworks the week of the Fourth, the closest as we can. You know, it's really up to what the public wants. And we, I take it from our committee. We meet, we discuss, they talk to, I mean, a lot of the people that are on the committee is members of, I mean, they talk to, you know, other groups, and they listen to what they do. Other groups, and they, they listen to what they do, and the parents expect. I mean, when we have the Fourth of July fireworks, the field is jammed.
Yep, oh, yeah.
So it's, so I think that they expect us to do it. You know, I'd like to have the Fourth of July week to go away, maybe. But unfortunately, it's, it's what they ask us to do, and so we find a way to make it happen. But I will bring it back to the committee and have a conversation, but I think the residents would like the fireworks, especially the week of Fourth of July. They're not going to get on the Fourth of July, but we're doing the best we can to accommodate that.
I still think it'll be very well attended on the second.
Oh, no doubt. No doubt.
Just quickly, the, to go back on the vote for the continuance of the billboard, because it's a special permit, you need to specify the time and date. So your meetings--
Next meeting is what?
On the 16th.
Seven o'clock?
So if you manage a motion to, to have, continue the hearing until July 16th at 7:00 PM.
Before we make that motion, just a post clarification, are we going to have the interviews and things, I just want to keep that in consideration of the people coming in, and that things, is that going to be a factor before we say that's the first thing on our agenda?
Wait a minute.
You have interviews at 6:00?
We're hopefully doing interviews a week before that.
No, no, I just want to make sure that we're thinking that through before we put it the first thing on our agenda, if there's a conversation or something like that. I just want to make, I don't want people waiting 6:00.
You do have interviews that night at 6:00 for the facilities committee, but you should